Good morning, and welcome to this the September or December 20th meeting of the Planning Commission. If you would all stand and join me in a fag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Brenton?
Here.
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here. All right. We have a -- are we waiting for Paul to come? Okay. He was.
While we're waiting for Paul, I might as well fill in the time. We had the -- okay, I'll lengthen it. We had the federal trial in the Homewood case yesterday. It was an eight-hour trial, and the judge has taken it under submission. We have no idea where that's going to go. In the state case on Homewood, as you may have, I think I filled you in that we did prevail at the trial level, but it has been appealed. So now we'll go to the next step on that one. Another case, and I'm not sure if I've filled you in on this one, that's the Timberline Project here in Auburn. We did prevail at the trial level. That has also been appealed. So we're going into the appellate practice for next year. And here is Paul.
My full zone is wack. He's here directly. Okay. I'd like to see my Christmas shirt. No.
Well, I guess because it's not a time-sensitive item, we can at least maybe ask if there's any public comments on items not on the agenda. Now would be a good time to make those. Well, that didn't kill much time. No stories? Once upon a time?
If you'd like, you could, because it's also not a time-datum. If you'd like to take your consent calendar now, you could do that. Oh, never mind. We've -- here he is.
You're on.
Sorry for the delay.
I'm concerned about that tie, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure that we want to be addressed by somebody wearing a tie like that, do we?
I know, man. Have your sunglasses on.
Yeah, I gotta put my sunglasses on.
We're, as you can tell, busy time of the season, as we have a variety of projects coming forward. And was just on the phone dealing with issues associated with the Orchard at Penrin Project, and wanted to bring that to the board or the commission's attention. The project was considered by the board on multiple occasions, and after testimony from more than 50 persons, the board closed the hearing and took action to approve the project, as was approved by your Planning Commission. They denied the appeals, and that was the final action taken on that project. A reminder that there is an at-large appointment for the West Slope that is open for consideration. That will be considered by the board at its January 8th meeting. We have anticipating a special meeting of the Planning Commission on January 17th. That will be up at Tahoe, and the intent is to discuss the community plan updates at that time. Lastly, on the board's January 8th meeting, Headquarters House RV Park, the appeal of the conditional use permit, as well as the consideration of the general plan amendment and rezone will be heard by the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes staff's comments.
Any questions?
Let's see, I do have a question. Apparently, the Board of Supervisors this week was considering a proposal that dealt with the regional university. Do you have any information on that?
It continues to be a work in progress. Regional University was, continues to look for opportunities to land a four-year university for its approved project out in the western part of the county. What was being considered by the board was a reimbursement agreement, which would provide a mechanism to allow for the reimbursement of the processing costs for that project. The board, the action they took on Tuesday was to consider the potential for reimbursement, and they talked to, or they directed staff to move forward and provide any necessary agreements that would be required, and that will be coming back to the board for its consideration within the next 90 days.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. All right, we have a consent agenda, a consent item on the agenda, and I guess we can either just take a vote on this now, or at the discretion of the commissioners, it can be opened up and brought to further discussion, and...
I do have just a couple thoughts on it. Though recognizing it's a consent item, and the commission last time actually gave some direction to staff to come back with this proposal, so that's pretty much where we're at. I guess I did want to clarify that the project proponent will have the ability to appeal the total package that he came in with originally.
Yes, once the commission takes action on this portion of the project, it is a final action on the project, and it is then appealable to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. That clarifies that. And the other question, and just a concern I have, though, you know, I don't expect really to act on it today, is that as we're looking at these community-centered proposals, there seem to be maybe some misunderstanding of the level of agriculture that was really involved in this particular project. And so at any rate, as we're considering these individually, I would hope that we don't distinguish between different agricultural products when we're determining which of the proposals really works and which one doesn't. You know, like if somebody has mandarins, is it okay to have a community center, or cowcalf operation, or winery? You know, when we get into the details of distinguishing between agricultural operations, I think we're kind of on a slippery slope. So that's my concern, that maybe in this project, we didn't really have a full picture of the agricultural involvement. And so though, I don't expect us to really take any action, other than the action in the consent agenda, I do kind of offer that caution.
So your preference would be to just go ahead and take action on the consent item without opening up the hearing again?
Yeah, I just wanted to make that comment that I just made, so...
Okay. Mr. Denial, your thoughts?
Yeah, my thoughts actually go along with Rich's, because I think as one that brought up, I think we just need a vehicle to move forward on this. And I don't think this is the time, because we do have something on the calendar today that addresses this, but I guess, you know, publicly, I still have a issue how the ordinance is written, and I think it just needs to be looked at, so we can get into it later, but...
Larry, your thing?
No comment.
Mr. Ricucci?
I'll be abstaining on this, as I wasn't here for the end of my...
Matter. Okay. It looks like, then, the desire of the commission is that we just take action on this consent item, so does that, I guess, still need a motion?
Move the consent calendar.
Second?
You know, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moves.
You want to now mention all the details about the appeal process?
This item is appealable. Anybody wishing to appeal it may pay a fee of $529 within 10 calendar days to file that appeal. Thank you. All right. Our 9:05 item is the vesting tentative subdivision map modification for North Star Highlands.
And staff is recommending that that item be continued to the special meeting on January 17th up at Tahoe.
Aye, so move.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
One comment on that last item. That will be timed at 10:05 up in Tahoe.
10:05?
Yeah, that's when we'll set that.
All right, on to, this is conditional use permit for Dutch Brothers Coffee and the Granite Bay Village Shopping Center. Roy?
Thank you, Chairman Moss. The Dutch Brothers Coffee request is for a conditional use permit for a 367-square-foot coffee kiosk with a two-lane double drive-through. And this is the location. It's outlined in red, the Granite Bay Village Shopping Center. And you have to the west here Auburn-Folsom Road, and then the intersection here with Douglas Boulevard. And there are some major tenants in here. If you went straight in, there's Ace Hardware, Gold's Gym, and I think Dominix is still on this corner. And it's a location. Now this shows just at the entry off of Auburn-Folsom Road, and if you've driven by there, you see this water feature. So it's immediately to the east of this water feature, and the actual 367-square-foot coffee kiosk is right in this location. And vehicles would come in here, drive-through window on this side, and also a drive-through window on this opposite side of the structure. And there's no area inside the coffee kiosk for any customers to go into. There is a window, actually, you could walk up to. And this shows the design, and we described in the staff report that we can, it was revised from their typical corporate colors. And there's one of the Dutch Brothers Coffee kiosks here in North Auburn. If you just go up a little farther on 49, you'll see it, and it's their typical corporate, fairly bright blue color. And this was redesigned at our request to match and be consistent with the colors and materials that are currently used in the Granite Bay Village Shopping Center. And when it went to the Granite Bay MAC meeting, it was reviewed by the Granite Bay MAC, they voted 6-0 to approve, and they were, recommend approval for the planning commission, and they were complementary of the design revisions that were made. So staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the following findings and attached recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes the staff report.
I have a question, and Roy, you and I talked about this on the phone, and as trivial as it may sound, it's kind of stuck in the back of my mind. We're all very much aware of the law of unintended consequences. And I'm wondering, as I read this, are we approving a building or a use?
In this case, I believe it is, it is both. And I might mention, previously in June of 2006, we came to the planning commission with this conditional use permit, and it was proposed a 1,500-square-foot wiki wiki juice and coffee, and you would have been here at that time as a planning commissioner. That was approved, and then it expired. So that was never built, never acted on, it expired, so now we have the one from Dutch Brothers. But the situation would be today, if, for instance, this was in business for two years, and all of a sudden Dutch Brothers disappeared, it was vacated, closed up, and another proposed business wanted to come in there, we would review it as part of our process. We would typically see a business license, and also they would be looking to lease this space. So we would look at what is the proposed land use. Is it allowable, and based on the ordinance, does it just need a clearance? Or would it be some proposed use that we'd have to come back again on another CUP? It's more typical it would be a clearance.
Yeah, when I read the conditions here, the condition is allow you the conditional use permit for the construction of this kiosk. It doesn't talk about the use. And where I'm coming from now is, we're seeing around the country, as our social standards change, things pop up that weren't intended. Let's say, for example, that Dutch Brothers decided that the legalization of marijuana, just to pick something at random, was kind of neat, and so they were going to sell, along with their coffee, medical marijuana. You know what would happen in the press, and the neighbors would be up in arms about it, and there'd be a lot of hoopla. Do we have any authority, control, pressure, or anything we can do as a county to limit that, assuming it's illegal permitted use, and I'm not going down that road, but just take it as a given?
Yeah.
You know, what do we have at this point to limit the use of that kiosk to just coffee and maybe donuts, but not, not something that's objectionable to the public at large?
That...
Yeah, maybe. It may have been a bad example, you know.
Maybe you should have used the fishing lures or something.
Maybe if we were in Washington State or Colorado, it might be more realistic. But, you know, I mean, I could see this coming, and I'm wondering, will we be cutting our nose off to spite our face if we just approved the kiosk, or should we put in there specifically for a use?
Well, this one actually is another example. They would still have to come in with a business license when this is constructed and finalized from our building department. At some point, they would be coming in under Dutch Brothers with a business license that we would actually okay at that time. And the second part of the question on medical marijuana might be a county council question.
Well, I didn't mean to get off into that issue. I was just saying, some objectionable use is what I was really trying to generalize that.
Yeah, we would definitely look at any new use that was coming in there. If it wasn't, if this one went out of business, and naturally, I'd say if it's, if it's a, another coffee business with another name, it would be just a matter of a clearance. But if it was any other use, we would have to look at it and see, is this going to trigger some other use permit?
Okay, so you're comfortable that we would have some review at that point if the use were to change?
Yes.
Okay, that was my concern.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Dutch? One of his representatives. Hi, my name's Lex Kofortham, the architect for the project, and also the applicant. And I've been involved with the shopping center since about 10 years, when we did the facelift-off, and we worked with staff, and we're happy with what we've ended up with. And, you know, just to speak to that use question, the question we went before, we had the larger facility made, 1,500 square feet. Really, the concern, I think, of the neighborhood is they didn't want another McDonald's-type use in there. And when the, when we approved the 1,500 square feet, those type of, you know, national fast foods don't go into that small a space, and they certainly don't go into a 367. From the landlord's standpoint, you're certainly not looking for anything other than a coffee use. Be happy to answer. Any other questions?
Any other question? Thank you very much. Oh?
You don't anticipate then having, to serve any other things?
Then what you're already talking about, you don't see that as potential?
No, not in a, in a very specific, small building that really is only equipped to serve coffee and, you know, Dutch Brothers line, what, you know, pastries and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak about this? Seeing none, I'll close that portion off and bring it back to the commissioners.
Well, if there's no discussion, by the way, I raised this issue because, you know, our country as a whole is kind of shifting a little bit. We're seeing evidence of that every time we go through an election, and things that were formerly forbidden are now questionable. And I just wanted to make sure that if a adult store, or a porno shop, or marijuana, or something that people find objectionable in the community were to take possession of that building, do we, as the county, still have a say in what goes on? Based upon what Roy said, I'm comfortable that we still have some degree of use, but, you know, that's concerning. So, Mr. Chairman, if there is no discussion, I would recommend the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, subject to the sequel findings, and conditional use permit findings that are in our staff report, and the conditions attached there, too.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries? And is this an appealable item also?
You would have thought you'd have brought samples or something, huh?
Of anybody wishing to appeal this decision of the planning commission may do so by paying a fee of $529 within 10 calendar days. I don't know if he wants, you want the drawers back? We're a little early. Any more legal news you'd like to give us?
Probably should take a break.
All right, let's take five.
Where do I go?
Don't ask that.
Can we start without Larry? It's Kathy we're waiting for. That's all right. We can start without Larry, okay? All right. Let's begin with our 9:30 item, conditional use permit for Cabin Creek biomass facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Biomass project here, brought to you a few months ago on the draft DIR to take comments on the draft DIR. So, we've kind of run through this once before, but just for the benefit of the people who may not have been there during that hearing, I'll just give a little bit of a recap if it's all right with you. The biomass project that's being presented to you today is a request that really came about as a result of the overall biomass program that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2007. Primary goals of the program that were identified back then were to reduce the risk of catastrophic wildfires in the county, to improve the overall air quality in the county, and also to find beneficial uses for excess biomass. To that end, Placer County has received a Department of Energy grant that we've used to help design and ultimately possibly construct a biomass power generating facility, in this case up at Cabin Creek. The county has also entered into a master stewardship agreement with U.S. Forest Service, actually, yeah, with U.S. Forest Service, to procure woody biomass from ongoing forest maintenance activities. The primary purpose of the master stewardship agreement is to reduce the acres burned on National Forest Service land through the removal of biomass as an alternative to creating slash piles. Most of these currently produced slash piles, as I mentioned before, are burned in the open as it has not been proven economically feasible to transport them to solid waste facilities. The proposed Cabin Creek biomass facility would utilize, would only utilize those piles that would otherwise be open burned. Facility, as I mentioned in our last hearing, was, it's a proposed two-megawatt facility. It'd be located in the southeastern portion of the Eastern Regional Landfill Materials Recovery Facility at the end of Cabin Creek Road. It would be, it would consist of an 11,000-square-foot primary facility that would house gasification units and the turbines for the power generating, and then attach 7,200-square-foot open pole barn structure that would kind of allow some of the material to be dried and enter into a dryer before it goes into the system. The only entitlement that's required for this is a conditional use permit. That's what we're requesting today. Here's the Cabin Creek site. Many of you are aware where it is, just south of the town of Truckee, about two or three miles south of Truckee, up at the north end of Cabin Creek Road. Kind of aerial image of the site. This is, the image on the left includes all four of the county-owned parcels that constitute the former landfill site. Kind of a close-up over here, you have the Materials Recovery Facility, an administrative maintenance building here for the county, and also the Tahoe area regional transit facilities over on the east side there. Project sites, this long irregularly shaped chunk of this larger parcel here at the southwest, or excuse me, southeast corner of the site, and it would come right off of Cabin Creek Road. This is site plan. You all have a kind of slightly more updated site plan, but basically it's the same idea. You have the primary facility, the gasification system would be here, close to Cabin Creek Road. The storage facility would be here. This large open area is, would be used for the five to six months of material storage to get us through the winter months. Trucks would come up Cabin Creek Road, enter onto a new haul route up through here. They would deposit materials here, exit the site this way. Here's a rendering of what it would look like out there. You can see how the trucks kind of come in and load back here. There would be an onsite loader permanently there that would move material from the open storage area into the covered storage area, also can move some of it into the dryer unit and then into the feed system. This is another image of the site here from the back. So, as mentioned in the... I'm sorry. We do have a couple of comment letters that were received here, and one was essentially in support. The second letter from Centers for Biological Diversity was submitted on the 18th. The two issues that were raised in the letter are regarding, there were three issues essentially that were raised in the letter. I'm sorry, my notes are all messed up here. There it is. The author of the letter essentially just adds nuances to the same issues that were raised in a comment letter that was submitted on the draft DIR for the project. There are three primary issues that are stressed in the letter. The first issue is that the author's assertion, is the author's assertion that the draft DIR did not establish a baseline for the evaluation of the project's greenhouse gas emissions. We have some folks here from APCD and also the air quality specialists who worked with us as the DIR consultant. So, if you have specific questions, you can ask them about those, but I'll kind of try to broad brush this for you. No single project has a significant impact on global warming. The greenhouse gas analyses are all inherently cumulative because it's a global issue. The project will generate greenhouse gases, as all projects will, but the project will not be singularly significant in its impact because the issue is a global one. An analogy would be the project's impacts to local area traffic. Some projects will result in a significant impact to a local intersection, and that's a quantifiable impact that we, for which we have a baseline understanding. That's the existing traffic flow and patterns in that area. But there is no single identifiable local impact from greenhouse gas emissions. So, we instead rely on the project's consistency with the lone piece of legislation that requires greenhouse analysis, greenhouse gas analysis and disclosure. That's Assembly Bill 32. As stated in the final DIR, the project is consistent with AB 32 and will not conflict with the Global Warming Solutions Act. The second two issues raised in the letter are in regard to the project's proposed fuel mix and the analysis based on this mix. The author states that the draft DIR is confusing because it states that the fuel is brought to the facility would otherwise have been open burned. The author claims that this approach is inconsistent with another statement that during unusually long winter months, the project may draw on existing piles of biomass that are stored at the Materials Recovery Facility. The most likely scenario is that all, or nearly all, the material would otherwise have been open burned at the site of origin, and that's because of the very nature of the master stewardship agreement that I mentioned a little bit earlier. In any event, these statements are merely clarifications of the issues that were raised in the draft DIR and further addressed in the final DIR. As mentioned in the staff report, we took the project to the Squaw Valley MAC. They recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the project. We also took the project as an action item to the NITRAC, North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, on December 13th. They also unanimously recommended approval of the project. We did have one condition that was not included in your packet. I'd like to add that one at this time. And this is a condition that was brought up a little bit late. It just didn't make it into the packet, so I'd like to read it into the record if that's all right. And that would state that the biomass truck deliveries shall avoid travel through the town of Truckee on either Donner Pass Road or West River Road unless an emergency, road closure, or other unique circumstance would necessitate travel on these roadways. Further, biomass truck deliveries on State Route 89 between Cabin Creek Road and Interstate 80 shall be prohibited on federal holidays and Sundays. I think you all have a copy of that condition, so we can discuss that further if we'd like.
What number of...
We would just, I think Kathy maybe add that as second to the last, or? Second to the last, then. With that, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request, and that would be subject to the recommended conditions of approval you all have attached to the staff report and also to the statement of findings that's attached to staff report as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions. I guess my first question is greenhouse gas. I have to question the difference in the product, production of greenhouse gas from the conditions that would have prevailed had the material not been removed from the forest. In other words, whether it sits there and rots in the forest, decomposes, or is burned, seems to me would be a trade-off for any gas that's going to be coming from this facility. And I, I just, I don't understand why it's even an issue, I guess.
The facility, in addition to generating emissions on its own, just through the gasification process, we also took into account all the chipping and mulching of the material, the transport of the material, and it's still, in terms of air contaminants, it didn't, it's a trade-off essentially. It will result in greenhouse gas emissions, the project will. There's just no getting around that. When contrasted with the open burning that would go on, it significantly reduces those greenhouse gas emissions, and that's why we're comfortable that it's less than significant impact.
Okay. Second question. Your additional condition that you're adding, I think it makes sense for 40-foot truck and trailers not to do this. But the reality of it is, there's a large percentage of that gets delivered by small pickups with sideboards and trailers that are self-dumping that probably aren't going to want to go out on Interstate 80. They're operated by tree, you know, nurseries and tree people, and they're not the type that you may be trying to prohibit. So, I would suggest that rather than prohibiting everybody, that you put a vehicle size or weight or load weight or something as the reason for bypassing that area because most people will come down from North Star area and Kings Beach area down 267, turn left on West River Street, pick up 89, and go to the landfill, rather than going all the way out to getting on the freeway, going along, turning, coming through the roundabouts in Truckee, and then pick up 89 again and go to the landfill. So, I, I think that for the big trucks, that would be understandable, but I don't see anything wrong with pickups staying on their regular route because they're just not going to want to go out onto the highway. That additional mileage, I guess. I don't know. It's just my personal feeling, but I, I would think the problem would be that the town wouldn't want big trucks on those roads, and I can understand that. But small, small one-ton pickups are, should be permissible, I would think.
Right. I doubt that any of this material would be coming in one-ton pickups. It's going to be something larger than that. But most of this would be coming, I'm not sure if they're 10 yards...
Well, the fire departments at the North Shore do a lot of it, and that's exactly what they use. They use, they blow it with a grinder into the back of a one-ton pickup, and it has, I don't know, maybe 12 yards each trip. It's small, but they do a lot of it all summer long.
Maybe once I turn it over to Brett, applicant, I'll let you kind of address that question.
You think he knows what he's doing? Oh, okay.
I'll take whatever other question.
Hey, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question, too.
Sure, Richard.
I noticed that apparently the MRF facility does accept, I guess you could call it yard waste or materials of people when they're doing their forestry in their yards or cleaning up the undergrowth, doing their fire protection, and they're bringing it to the MRF place, but frequently they don't have it shipped. But I noticed that there's a prohibition or no chipping at the site. I was wondering how you handle that type of material, because I can see a value for local residents that would like to fire safe their home to do some clearing and bring it in, but it probably would just be in a pickup truck.
Okay. Generally, we do not intend to use that material, and it's not part of the master stewardship agreement that we're operating under for this facility. This facility is really designed to only utilize those materials that are currently being produced with U.S. Forest Service practices, maintenance practices.
It's got to be clarified.
Okay. I'll let him answer that one as well.
Okay. Because it sounds like there's material already at the MRF that's going to be used. At least I got the impression in the report that it would be.
Not necessarily by this facility. So, this facility would not utilize those materials that are up there unless it was in long winter and we had some kind of...
Okay. I'll probably ask why when we get around to the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think they may take it up to the other...
All right. Can you come up and give us some more clarification, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members. My name is Brett Story. I work for the Planning Systems Division here at the county. In this sense, I am the applicant because I have been the project manager, working with the investors to bring this forward to you today. I'll start by answering the questions in order, and then I have a clarification for the record as well. With regard to the trucking addition, it was generally to represent large trucks. It actually wouldn't work well with trucks on emissions or on fuel or any of those things to come through the middle of Truckee. It's actually much better to go all the way around and bring it to the facility for a lot of reasons. Generally, I would make the statement that 95% plus of all the material that this facility will use will come from large trucks. Again, 95% of that will come from U.S. Forest Service, those piles that would be normally burned. The other 5% of that greater than 95% material would come from, as you mentioned, local fire agencies, state agencies that we already have grant agreements with and we are working towards, should this facility be built, to have an actual agreement with them. Our desire is to have that material, well, it will be a rule, that that material's got to be ground on-site or somewhere else and then brought to our material in larger trucks. There, you're right, Mr. Severson, that there may be some smaller trucks that may come. We prefer to have them to come around, and if we are going to have an agreement with them, we'd like to stand by that agreement that would have all trucks go the highway and bring it. We will be working with each of them on a cost-share basis as well, so it's not just their cost or just our cost. And so, we will work all those issues out. We feel like that's the appropriate way to bring this material and to keep on large roads and to keep the trucks that are going to carry this material. Both bringing it in as well as the biochar that would go out, which would be in smaller or flatbed trucks, we also would ask them. So, that's all of the contractual relationships that this facility will have. As people in general, if we don't have a contract with them, if they're from chipping or other companies or individuals, they will still go to the MRF. They will bring theirs in their normal fashion, and that will go to the MRF. One of the issues we have is that we cannot, unless the material is controlled, we can't guarantee that it will meet the specifications of the state of California and CAL FIRE to ensure that we are using the cleanest and appropriate forest wood waste in our facility. So, thereby, because we want it controlled, we will do it contractually through the ability to chip on-site and to certify that it is forest or WUWE-based, which is Wildland Urban Interface, which is essentially trees that is just outside the U.S. Forest Service. But we do make the distinction because fire departments don't clear in the forest, they clear in the WUWE area, as well as the state of California and their state parks and other agencies that are in the region. So, that is clarifying your questions, I believe. Did I get your question, Mr. Johnson, as well?
Yeah. I think you answered the question. Apparently, the state of California's got a certification process where you have to have clean.
Correct. And it's in the DIR as well.
And it says no, you know, you can't use preserved or painted material and that kind of stuff.
Right. And to answer the question, should it be an extra-long winter and we must use something? Chances are, we won't. It's a very unlikely scenario, but that wood would also be certified as being 100% forest waste as well. We would not accept anything that had any materials. We have an emissions regime that the Air Pollution Control District and SEQA has put in for us, and we intend to abide by that. In fact, right now, we are under that, and we intend to stay that way at all times. I do have a...
I do kind of, well, to me, it seems a little puzzling where actually there's a benefit forest-fire-wise for... a benefit forest-fire-wise for, to encourage people to clean up.
Correct.
On their own private property. But if they do that, that just goes to the dump then. Is that's what's happening?
A lot of it is burned. That's why we'd be accepting it, because people will burn it rather than, the dump also, or the MRF also charges for that, and many people do not have the ability to pay that for whatever reason, and so they burn it on their sites. The forest, uh, fire departments do the same thing, and that is the material that we, we are looking.
So you would take it from the small landowners?
Um, probably not from a small landowner. We do have a relationship, we are building with homeowners' associations where they can lock the material or keep it behind a fence, and they can control and guarantee. We had this issue early in our program where we worked with a particular fire department where it wasn't contained, and people threw batteries and blades in there to damage the equipment. And so I, I don't want to pay for any more of my contractor's equipment, nor do I want the possibility of, of that going in. It's, it's a very expensive process to clean. These are very expensive, um, set of materials, the gasification and the engines themselves. We're, we're talking about probably an eight-million-dollar investment in equipment alone. So it's, it's of the utmost important to keep this controlled and clean for economic as well as environmental reasons. And if, and if you would indulge me, I'd like to clarify for the record, in the, the same letter that Mr. Haas talked about from the Center for Biological Diversity, there's a nuance at the end where the author makes the statement, there wasn't an adequate explanation that MRF Material Recycling Facility Process Fuels are currently hauled to other biomass plants, and it's cost-prohibited for other biomass plants to haul the fuels from the Tahoe National Forest to those lengthy facilities. Well, that, it, just so you understand, in all of the work we've done all along, we looked at what the industry and the fuel buyers in the industry look at, which is, they've actually calculated down to, for extreme, every mile you go, it's about a two-dollar expense for the added miles, because you're considering the wear and tear on the trucks, the truck driver, the diesel fuel, not to mention the emissions that are extra the further you go. But from an economic standpoint, each one of those big trucks holds about twelve-and-a-half bone-dry tons equivalent of material. And so if the facility, if, if another facility, let's say Lincoln, which is the current closest operating facility, which is eighty miles away, that's about twenty-five dollars a bone-dry ton extra per trip. Right now, the, the facility will pay anywhere from thirty to forty-five dollars for a bone-dry ton. So suddenly, you've eaten up everything just getting it there. It's not a cost-effective solution. Similarly, if Loyalton ever opens again, and we're, we're not under the understanding it may or may not, that's still forty miles away, that's an extra twelve dollars and fifty cents a bone-dry ton, which is why we always have done our, our economic analysis on a twenty-to-thirty-mile radius. That still allows us to collect the majority of the material from the Lake Tahoe Basin and that region of the Tahoe National Forest, of those piles that would be burned. It still allows us, because of this cost-sharing, to bring that material at a economic basis we believe will be okay to our facility to be burned, and that's from the economic side. On the emission side, Jerry had told you, it's, it's a far larger benefit to the community not to have that material burned in the open. It's approximately a ninety-seven percent reduction in, in air emissions by going through a facility like ours. So, thank you.
Good question.
Happy to answer anymore.
Well, they're, they're producing a lot of biomass right at the landfill today.
Yes, they are.
Shipping wood products and wood waste. Where does that go?
Uh, well, again, it used to go to Loyalton. They now have a contract to take some of it to SPI and Lincoln, so they are actually, it's costing them extra money to do that, and I can't speak to their economics. You would have to ask the, 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 the MRF. They also, as I understand it, some of the material goes into mulch and other wood byproducts as well. But again, that, that would be a question for them.
And I just can't understand California. What makes it work?
And I won't comment on that comment.
I have a question.
This doesn't make any sense.
Brett?
Yes.
It's a two-megawatt plant. Is, is it, is that on a continuous basis, or is it going to be run fifty percent of the time, or?
Um, we anticipate that, again, we're, we would be selling electricity, and it would depend on the PP, the power purchase agreement we, we finally end up with negotiating with, with Liberty Energy. The idea would be to produce as much and as long as you possibly can, but these are, it, it's two separate one-megawatt gasification units and then two separate engines. They do need maintenance. The idea is that we, we hope to run three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day, with at least one of the units. But at some points in time, one of, each of the units would have to be, and potentially the engines, would have to be cleaned and serviced. So we generally wouldn't run everything all the time, but certainly, it would be of economic benefit to run as much as practical. However, there are manufacturers' maintenance authorizations that we must abide by. So I, I would guess we'd probably be in the eighty-five percent.
Okay.
Ninety percent.
Thank you.
Let me see, just, to go back just a little bit, just for clarification purposes.
Certainly.
Let me see, you said that the MRF currently, they're chipping stuff up and sending it down to Lincoln?
Some of it is. I'm not aware of every place they send it to.
Okay. And so then, is the reason that it won't work with this facility is the gasification process here in Girton and Lincoln?
Um, well, first of all, Lincoln is not gasification. It is a boiler system. They are comparable systems. Ours would be, the gasification system would be newer, more efficient. It also costs more upfront, but it's a long, long-term investment. It's actually a lower cost. No, no, Planning Commissioner Johnson, you'll recall from beginning of Jerry's presentation that our Board of Supervisors helped generate the requirements for this system, and one of the issues that they wanted us to, to do was take the material off that was going to be burned, and so that is our primary goal in this project. That material, there is plenty of it, there's plenty of what the MRF produces also, but our goal and part of why our emissions are lower, and, and the whole process is that, is that trade-off. We are trying to attempt to take off a large number of those burn piles that are in that region, which affect the air emissions, they affect people's respiratory systems, they affect recreation, they affect business, quite frankly. So it's a goal of Placer County to combine that. So we could ju, if we were a normal business, let's say, it might even be cheaper to actually take those materials from the materials recycling facility. Again, we'd have to certify that they were a hundred percent forest material in order to get the emissions properly, but the, Placer County has a greater goal, and this project is a piece of that program which the Board of Supervisors wholeheartedly supports, and my direction has been, and particularly working with the Air Pollution Control District as well as, as a, 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 a group of interest, is to keep the emissions as low as possible and to hopefully provide a better environment in the Tahoe region. We have potentially plans to do it other places as well.
Yeah, I can hear where you're coming from and can accept that, though I guess kind of where my mind is going is particularly if this is a model for the rest of the county. I mean, there's needs for this type of process on the west side, too.
Correct.
And all along, one of the benefits I've personally thought about in having a facility like this in, say, Forest Hill or somewhere around Colfax. Would be that it gives residents, you know, not, it helps the Forest Service out and larger landowners, but it gives residents a relatively inexpensive way to keep the property clean and fire safe. And so, you know, for now, you know, you've got to prove the process, but hopefully, as it migrates to this end of the county, we take a look at how individual residents might benefit from the process.
Yes, we would probably never go to individual residents, but as you know, Forest Hill has an excellent fire safe council and, and fire department. Our, our idea would be that they would control the material somehow and certify that it, that it was clean and had, that, that's really our issue.
They have different programs now, and they can actually control the chipping of the material and bring.
It's really the control of it, because people, unfortunately, in society today, they do try to stop the, some of the contractors I've had, you know, they've had their equipment spray painted, they've had blades thrown in, batteries. There was a car underneath one pile at one point.
Put their sofa in, right?
Pardon?
Put their sofa in the pile.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess now it's time we open this up for public to come comment, speak. Anybody? Going once, seeing none, and close it off and come back to the commissioners?
I'd like to say that just.
I, I agree with Larry that I don't see any reason why we couldn't put a provision in this latest condition that this trucks, this condition only regards trucks of, of a certain size.
Class, class A.
Class A's or something like that. So people can still be encouraged to bring their, and small fire departments can be encouraged to bring their trucks through Truckee, as you say, on West River Street, and down to the mass biomass. I think, I think that's not a bad idea.
Well, I just, I guess I just would rather not have a confrontation with my own people saying, what in the world are you guys doing, disallowing us from driving our regular way to get to where, I mean, there's people in Donner Summit that are going to come down Old Donner Summit and go down.
I agree.
Donner Pass Road and get to the MRF, too. So I just, I think it should be limited to, you know, some load limit, maybe fourteen tons or something like that, which was a two-axle truck, probably.
Larry, you may recall that this was inserted at the request of the town of Truckee because they had read the EIR and expressed some concern about traffic through their town. And so I'm not sure we want to play with it too much, but let me suggest this idea. If you take the words "shall" out and you put "should," would that change the whole nature of it to make it somewhat discretionary and satisfy your concerns?
Well, I guess that, that brings up my question, which is the "or what?" I mean, here we have a rule with no consequence.
Yeah.
And it just kind of bothers me that we get into these things that if, if, I mean.
Do, do those, maybe, do those roads, those two roads that are mentioned in this condition, do they have weight limits already on them?
No, they just.
I don't think so. They're, they go right to commercial areas.
Okay, I didn't know if sometimes they'll to, to communities or counties, whatever, to, to divert traffic elsewhere, they'll put a, whether the street can maintain the load or not, they'll, they'll put a, a limit on it.
There's not.
To, to limit some of that tra, heavy traffic, and I was just asking, since I don't live in that area, but you're telling me no.
Predominantly, West River Street is heavy industrial.
Okay. Well, I know where, I know where I thought.
So I, I just, I, I don't understand it. I mean, it could turn out that at some, well, I won't go there.
It seems like, it seems like this provision here is, you know, the CHP or the Truckee cops aren't going to enforce this provision. It would be by complaint. Is that correct?
Well, it'd have to be probably CHP and, and the town of Truckee.
Would complain?
Probably would. I guess they would, well, I, I don't know who's going to enforce it, whether it's, Placer County's not going to enforce it in, in the town of Truckee, and, and I'm not sure the town of Truckee is going to know whether the truck is a local truck or a truck from.
Or just going to the MRF.
Going to the MRF, or who it is, what it's doing, so it's, it's a pretty.
It's almost advisory.
Yeah.
Though it is pretty, pretty firm when you have a, a large chip van, when that's going through Truckee, then that's going to raise some eyebrows. But if you have a pickup truck going through Truckee, it's probably not going to raise many eyebrows.
Now, this wouldn't rise to the level of an ordinance or a statute or something. At best, it would allow the operators of the facility to point out to their commercial haulers, hey, we have this policy, try to abide by it because the town of Truckee is complaining, and we do want to accommodate them to the extent we can.
I like your "should" as opposed to "shall."
It probably.
It just makes a policy, that's all, yeah.
I think that's probably adequate. Is that okay with you? Yeah?
Yeah, I, I think it all comes down to town of Truckee.
But there's, there's no consequence anyway, so that's, it's kind of a, a feel-good.
If they want to pass this thing, saying that they don't want these arms, then town of Truckee can pass them, where it is saying, you're not allowed through here.
They can make it a non-truck route or something, yeah.
But at least we can say that we're backing them up that they should.
Okay, I think that's adequate. Thank you.
So, so we had a discussion, or do we have a motion on this, or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, a few ready for a motion. All recommend that we pass the recommendation of the Development Review Committee and certify the environmental impact report, EIR, for the Cabin Creek Biomass Facility Project, and adopt the Statement of Findings, Attachment D, and the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, Attachment E. And two, approve the conditional use permit to allow the construction of two, of a two-megawatt biomass electric generating plant, subject to the following findings and attached recommended conditions of approval, and also the findings in the SEQA final environmental impact report listed one through four, and the conditional use permit with the, with the findings for the final environmental impact report and the conditions as listed one through four on page nine.
Along with the new condition?
Along with the new condition that's modified.
From "should" to "shall," or from "shall" to "should."
Should.
And Larry, you're including all of the conditions of approval that are attached to our staff report, I assume?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then I guess this is an appealable item?
Yes.
Anybody wishing to appeal this decision may do so within ten calendar days by paying a fee of five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars.
Is that a shocking decision?
A lifter. We have the Wise Villa Winery Community Center.
Ready when you are.
I'm ready. What are you looking at me for? I'm ready. Look at the other, and somebody else.
Lisa, when you're ready.
Okay. Well, good morning. Um, yes, the, this item before you is the Wise Villa Winery Community Center. Uh, just to give you a little direction on where it's at, here is Auburn, Lincoln, one-ninety-three, so it's kind of in the middle out here. This is a close-up or closer-up view of the site, and the zoning in this whole area is farm with a lot-size minimum of ten acres. This parcel is approximately twenty acres. This is a site plan showing the existing features on the property, which include a single-family residence driveway and their residence, and the entrance driveway to the, to the existing winery and tasting room and parking lot. This is about fifteen acres of planted vineyards. And the applicant is requesting a minor-use permit in order to function, utilize this area. The tasting room and winery is the community center to host up to fifty people four times a week for wine pairing and educational events, and up to a hundred people twice a month. And one of the stipulations that the, the applicant actually presented himself, and we made a condition of approval, is that all events shall be agricultural or wine-related Hours of operation would be, in order to allow him the flexibility to host these smaller wine pairing events, the dinners on any given day, he'd like to have the opportunity to have seven days a week, so he can flex, flex his times of his events on the days. Looking at ten AM to eight-thirty PM for public hours, and then at eight-thirty, when the public disperses, staff would be allowed to clean up until ten PM. And he is also requesting a variance to the surfacing requirements. Most of the parking will happen right in here, and he has a few parking spaces up at his, up in this area. This is the general parking area where ninety-nine percent of the time, all of the parking will happen. On those two events per month that are proposed, that could go up to a hundred people, he would have over the amount of cars that would fit in here, so he would like to utilize this area of his vineyard roadways as overflow parking, and he would like to have that not paved. He is proposing to pave the parking lot and the entire driveway, and of course, the encroachment area. But due to the need to access these vineyards with the machinery. But due to the need to access these vineyards with the machinery, he would like to have the availability to have, to not pave these, these two areas. Little bit of background for you, uh, this item did go before the Lincoln MAC as both an informational and then back as an action item. Um, originally, it went to the ZA, um, with a categorical exemption and the ZA, um, deemed it incomplete and required further environmental review. We did go back and, uh, did a thorough analysis, um, and created a mitigated neg deck. It went to the ag commission, who voted unanimously to approve, recommend approval to this commission. And then it also went in September to the Lincoln MAC, who also recommended approval. Um, and then the mitigated de, negative declaration went out for its thirty-day review and here we are today. Um, the, during the environmental review, some of the things that we looked at, well, first, we looked at baseline versus what's proposed. Baseline conditions are the existing tasting room, the existing winery, the existing parking lot and driveway. And what would be the change? The change would be, of course, the allowance of events at the, at the tasting room and the paving and of the entrance driveway and the parking lot. Um, but the majority of the infrastructure is already in place. Uh, we did receive quite a few public comments, both for and against the project. Um, and some of the, uh, public comments, well, all of the public comments that we received were contained within your staff report, so you could consider those. Um, some of the main issues brought up, one was traffic. Um, the traffic consultant did analyze the traffic, uh, which would result from both the proposed project and the project in conjunction as for cumulative effects with other proposed projects and found with the implicat, implement, uh, sorry, woo, try that again, implementation of mitigation measures that, uh, all traffic impacts were considered less than significant. Um, noise, uh, noise study analyzed the worst-case scenario. Uh, they went out, put speakers in the, uh, tasting room building where they will be with the doors, the doors weren't even on the building yet, so that, that's the worst-case scenario because during the functions, of course, the doors would be on the building. Measured that and measured what would happen with people coming up, driving, open their doors, closing their doors, leaving, and found that all of those, uh, noise impacts were, uh, well below the Placer County noise standards at the property lines. Uh, land use. Um, the intent of the farm zone, as you know, is to provide areas to conduct, uh, commercial agricultural oper, operations that also can accommodate necessary services to support their agricultural uses. So, the additional use of the existing tasting room to host agriculturally related events will help the owner to enhance his winery operations. Uh, the applicant is not proposing weddings or concerts. Uh, Mr. Lee stated intent is simply to provide a venue for hosting wine, food, pairing, educational events at his place. Uh, commercial operation, several of the commenters object to the project stating that it's a commercial operation. Um, as just stated, the, the purpose of the farm z, zone district is to provide areas for, for, for the conduct of commercial agricultural operations. Um, and the proposed community center will directly benefit the onsite winery operation. Lastly, the moratorium on community centers that's been talked about, the board has to date not taken any action to restrict the processing of these community center applications. And the present use permit process enables both staff and the planning commission to analyze and judge each individual request on its own merits and identify and impose conditions of approval based upon the unique characteristics of a project site and its surrounding area. And staff has thoroughly reviewed the substantive com, comments on the environmental review and has concluded that the proposed mitigated negative declaration remains adequate. Um, just as a, um, matter of discussion, just wanted to kind of bring about the other kinds of activities that are allowed within the farm zone district, shooting ranges, colleges and universities, dog kennels, hospitals and veterinary clinics, airfields, all of these, which require a use permit also, could have the potential for the same or greater traffic and noise impacts as the proposed project before you. Um, I did take a couple of recent pictures. This is, I went and visited the neighbors, the closest neighbor to his property. Um, and this photo is taken from her driveway and, uh, as you can see, or it's kind of hard to see in this picture, but, um, the applicant is really trying to do the best he can for all of the neighbors, uh, in his planning. And so, with that in mind, he took upon himself to plant, I believe it's, you can ask him, but I believe it's about forty trees, including redwoods here. You can see, this was taken a couple of days ago and so, these trees are, um, on full leaf, so the only visible portion is this little portion right here. And he is, has planted redwood trees here and he's planting evergreens here to diminish that impact on the neighbor. Um, this is another view, this is of the taste, existing tasting room. And with that, I'll leave you with a recommendation. Um, we, we would recommend that you adopt the mitigated neg deck, that you approve the minor use permit for the community center and approve the variance. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I have a couple of questions here. Let me see, uh, does, does the zoning in the farm zone require that, uh, uh, community centers have a nexus or promotion for agriculture?
No, there is no, um, nexus for that. However, in this case, he is, um, it is to promote his agricultural, uh, operation, but it's not a necessity. It's not required within the community center definition.
Okay. And then it kind of gets to the second question and thank you, I appreciate that. Is there anything in this, now, I know what the owner's intent is and that's pretty clear and I expect that's probably what his plans are, but is there anything in the conditions that would, uh, prevent in the future weddings and other activities from using this, uh, facility?
Well, condition number, um, three, all events held at the site shall have an agricultural or wine, food, educational component. So, therefore, if somebody wanted to come in later on, um, if for some reason this property was sold and the new owner wanted to have weddings or something that wasn't agriculturally related or wine-related, they would have to come back in and get a minor use permit modification to do that and that would go through the whole process again, uh, public process.
Okay. Well, maybe the difficult thing there and puts you on the spot a little bit, what, what constitutes agriculture related? Is that a definition that's got a definition someplace?
Something that prom, uh, yeah, you are...
See, I come in...
I, I guess...
Well, let me, let me just back to the weddings.
Same thing, a different way.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Using a wedding as an example, somebody comes in and so they're saying, okay, we're selling our wine and they have to use our wine at this wedding and stuff and it's out in an agricultural area, is that potentially exemptable? I guess honestly, the problem I have with this whole thing is when you say a community center and, and there's things that you can do under communis, community centers. You can do just about anything where there's large groups of people and you can do it three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Now, I know there's a lot of self-imposed conditions on this, but what happens if the next person or, or like where you have maybe five different families that are on the same road that, that want to do this, so they said, well, I can do this and then it all comes before us and we have somebody that maybe we gave permission and allow them to do it, but then the next person comes in and then, then we're saying, well, at what point do you restrict or, or how do you make it, how do you make it work? I guess the last time this came up, my issue is, it's all in farm zoning and you, you showed some things, well, dog kennels are acceptable, there's airports and stuff, there's other restrictions on those types of uses. You can't just build an airport anywhere. You have to go through the FAA, you have to go through the federal government, dog kennels, there's environmental health issues and there's all sorts of things that I see are not addressed in community centers. Now, if this was named something elsewhere specifically for wineries, maybe under wineries that have tasting rooms or something and we looked at it, I probably would not have a problem with it. But because it's a community center, Rich earlier in the comments section of our commission meeting had, had stated, well, what about, um, if somebody's growing mandarins or, you could name any, any product and going up, you know, one ninety-three where you have Mandarin farms and kiwis and different things, they could, they could come in and say the same thing. So, pretty soon, Placer County has five hundred, you know...
Event centers.
Different community centers. Now, we, we have the wineries, we have the, the ag tour maps that you can get that show all the different ag-related, um, farms and ranches in the area. And if there was something that, that we looked at that maybe boosted up the, the things that they could do under what, stuff that they, they grow and they sell and market and it's commercial and everything and it's sort of tailored to them, it's, it's fine. But the problem is, community center, you know, is, is so broad that I, I just have to be honest, I, I can't really approve anything until there's maybe a, a real look at what, you know, what we would be approving. Cause it'd be pretty hard for me to look at Mr. Carson and say, you know, last meeting denied you and then this next meeting I have the same thing, I'm gonna approve you. And I don't know if it's where somebody has to put their ag use into a, if there's something like a PD-type farm zoning where there, there's something that puts a little bit onus on it, so it doesn't end up that anybody could come in and, um, say, I want to put a community center in. And I, I'm just being honest with everybody out here and with, with staff and, and other commissioners, I, I just see it so broad and, and it's really hard because this is truly one where for me personally, I'm having to pick and choose, you know, what I think is good and, you know, what should go and what shouldn't go. And I just, I think there should probably be some underlying stuff that we would have to follow that would be fair for the general public and also easier for us to, to determine. As if it's commercial enterprise, it's pretty easy when you have commercial areas or areas of planned development that have the flexibility to do things. But I'll tell you, when you get into the, to the farm zoning and whether it's five acre, ten acre or agricultural residential and it's just a blanket where anybody honestly could come forward and propose something and put it in, I mean, I, I could qualify, I could put in an application for the property I have and do the same thing, you know, so, I don't know.
I think, I think the issue that comes up too is that, uh, you know, somebody has an entrepreneurial idea for a community center and they have to wait till the planning commission acts and, uh, if the criteria, if it's all based on individual judgments about whether a wedding can be agriculture-related, you know, I, I, in my mind, I think it can be because they're having their wedding in the farm zone, they're not having it in a church up in town or something like that. And so, they went there to the farm zone to, for the ambiance and, uh, they're in an agricultural area, that's why they're, so, so at any rate, uh, you know, yeah, we're talking about individual judgments about what constitutes acceptable farming for a community center. And, uh, I think it's unfair to make somebody go through the whole process to find out that as individuals on any given day, we don't agree with it.
Well, in the process of the minor use permit is to look at each site individually as, and as related to its onsite capabilities for parking. Like you said, you could go and propose, but maybe your site isn't, doesn't warrant it, maybe, and the cost associated with putting in all of those improvement, improvements. There's a lot, it's not, as you know, it's not as easy as just applying for a use permit and getting it. It's, there's a lot of things that go into it, a lot of costs, a lot of expense, a lot of heartache and it's not for everybody. And, and so, each one really needs to be looked at as an individual.
I'm very aware of that, but there's a lot of, a lot of areas, there, there's just so much gray area. When I see winery, community center, if it was a winery center or something specific where we could, I guarantee...
Wine tasting.
Well, I, I could almost guarantee you that if we approve this one, that every winery in Placer County is gonna come in and they're gonna want the same thing. I would rather see something that maybe expands their ability to do, um, events at their rooms, cause there's a lot of other wineries in the county that have tasting rooms that sell. Or even if they don't, they have eighty-five percent of what you just said in place and alls they have to do is maybe build a structure, do some paving and then it gets back to, okay, if it's a Mandarin ranch where they're doing school tours and everything else, that they want to do it. I mean, I just, I see this as so broad that I don't know if, if we do something that is specifically for wineries on this or if we do it, you know, look at community centers, I think it's the community center part of it that is just tough because it is very broad. I mean, if somebody came in and they, they had the acreage, they had everything and said, look, we're doing whatever, you know, we're raising cattle and stuff, but we just want to do weddings because we have a beautiful setting and backdrop and everything, would we deny them?
That would be up to you.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, but it's so broad.
I think that part of it is, I mean, this is a, a, a big base to, to help keep agricultural viable in, in an area where it's getting harder and harder to do so. Um, one of the things I relied heavily on in the last one that came before us was the, the vote of the agricultural commission and I'm assuming that they're taking a look at, at how, how pertinent the operation is to the agricultural end of things. Um, and, and hopefully with more education on that subject matter than, than I have.
Well, I, I don't, and I can't speak to how they voted. I mean, if I just read, read this over and didn't really delve into it, I'd say, cause it, it is, it is great just as it is here, but if you had ten, you know, ten of them on one roadway like in Napa or something... in Napa or something, would we allow all 10 of them? I guess I just sort of see it as different because there are different ag users out there that could fall under this and, yeah, it all comes back to what we say. So if approved this, it is pretty hard to go to the next guy and say yes or no.
One of the problems that I think you're alluding to, Jeffrey, and that's what I've brought up before, is, you know, the commission, I'm sure, had a hearing on this, you know, I'm not real clear whether in the previous one, the proponent was able to attend the meeting or even knew about it. But I guess where I'm, you know, and I spent a lot of time on the ag commission myself, and their objectives are very clearly to promote agriculture. But at any rate, when it gets to the planning commission level, if we're deciding that this type of agriculture is better for community centers than that type of agriculture, and we're getting into the weeds on various proposals and relationships to agriculture, like we mentioned mandarins, if somebody wants to do mandarins, then I think we're really getting into the dangerous zone where we're deciding which kind of agriculture really qualifies, barring, I guess, what Ken is talking about, if it becomes clear through some kind of a process that we're going to have community centers approved in this type of agriculture, then it becomes more specific. But I don't think we're quite to that level yet, so I question really even the ag commission or us deciding whose agriculture qualifies.
Well, I guess minus direction from the board, that's what we get the big bucks for here.
Well, that's why it lasts.
Well, what I'm hearing from, yeah, what I'm hearing from you guys down there is that you're uncomfortable with this because there's no objective standard by which to measure it. It would be nice if any agricultural interest throughout the county could take a look at the county ordinances and say, "Okay, here's what I have to meet in order to get it approved." Boom, 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 boom. And we're not there. Is that part of the problem? Is it appears that our response is somewhat arbitrary? And, you know, that's echoing what the MACS said in their letters to us, all of them said, "We need a ZTA, we need a zoning tax amendment on this, we need to have something more definitive." Even the MACS were bothered by it. So the question becomes, and we haven't finished the hearing here today and heard from the public yet, but do we start considering these on a one-by-one basis? And I had to kind of laugh when Lisa you said that, actually it was in the report, that the planning director made a determination that it would be better to send this to the commission. What a wimp out.
Thank you, Michael.
I don't blame her, I duck it too. But do, you know, do we hold this in abance and beg the staff to come up with some sort of objective standards, or what do we do? Is it like pornography, we can't define it, but we know it when we see it, and this is an agricultural-related use? Your comment, Ken, about every agricultural user out there wanting to have one of these centers could well become true. You know, you've got Mandarin users, you've got the kiwis, you've got the wineries, you have apples, you have everything else. And we could be besieged with these things if we didn't have something objective to look at.
Well, you know, yeah, I agree with what Solomon said, but, you know, the winery out there's already been having events, at least two or three political events that my wife went to out there, so it wasn't just a straight wine tasting. So they've already had events that may or may not have been in violation of their permits, but I do believe that we do have to put some kind of definition because handling one at a time is just heading down that troubled path. It's, and the comment was made in one of these letters that we got that says, you know, you should change it from community center to an event center, or at least define those two. And I had written that on top of one of my sheets before I even read their memo, and I think that's true. We're calling it a community center, whatever that might mean in the definition, but really we're talking about an event center, they want to have events there. This one here is a little more closely related to the agriculture than maybe some of the others that the commission's heard before I even got on here. But, you know, and even 100, you know, 50 is one thing, but 100, twice a week is still-
Twice a month.
Twice a month is still a lot of people down that little road. And accumulative stuff, you know, we're talking about cumulative, well, this might be the only one on that road, but then like it was mentioned, we could have 10 in a row there, and then what do we do, turn the second person down, the third person? Because we've hit finally the traffic limit on that road?
It's a race to get your use in first.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, I think we need more work, that's for sure.
So as I understand it, it seems that the things we're lacking is a definition of agriculture as far as agriculture-related event. And secondly, who makes that determination whether it's agricultural or not? And those are the two things, it seems to me, that we need to know before we can start approving these kind of requests.
And I think some broader-
See, it seems like, Mr. Chairman, it seems like we ought to go on with the hearing and then, yeah.
I think we've kind of beat this up enough here.
I'll go ahead and have a seat and let the applicant come up then.
Would the applicant like to come up, please?
I don't know what to say now. I'm Grover Lee, owner of Wise Villa, Wise Villa Winery. I understand what you're all saying, and I always did say all along that I absolutely agree with what you're saying, it makes sense to me. This has been a two-year process for me. I've tried to do everything that the county asked me to do. I've tried to limit what I'm trying to do to agriculture, and there's reasons for that, it's just personal. And now we come full circle, and I'm hearing this, and it does not sound too good to me after doing everything that I've done. I would like to see someone up there apply for this community center. Was that, who was that, was that you, Larry?
No.
No, I think it was Ken.
And go through what I went through. Put in a commercial well because when you use public water, water for the public, you have to have a commercial well. And not only that, but I have to put a filtration system in. That was over $100,000. My road is going to be over $100,000. I could, my tasting room, and if I want any food served, I don't know if you have any idea what the health department wants and all those rules and regulations. Those were multi-hundreds of thousands of dollars. All right. You know, I'm the youngest of six. My dad died when I was seven. We had no money at all. Grew up in a couple thousand acres around my little neighborhood. I've been in grapes and agriculture all my life. I came to one of these meetings once in a suit, I flew in directly from the East Coast, and I was criticized for that. Having to have a doctorate and a medical board certification in managed care medicine and chronic care. So I have a company that takes care of people. Just came back last night at 1:00 in the morning. I wear this every day, so I thought I'd wear it and not have somebody criticize me for wearing a suit tonight, today. Anyway, yeah, it's very difficult. I know what you're thinking, and I want to do anything that I possibly can do. When I hear a complaint from any one of my neighbors, it really bothers me. Let me take a breath.
You know, I think you're caught up, I'm sorry to say, in a sketch 22. I don't, we have any fault with what you're applying for, I understand your dilemma. We're frustrated because we're being overwhelmed by similar applications, and we need to treat people fairly, and we don't have the tools to work with. You know, we haven't gotten it, we've asked the board at this point to consider standards for these kinds of things, and we haven't gotten there yet. And so I'm not sure what we can do. We're just, we're kind of frustrated, as I'm sure you are.
I know, I know. You know, it's like you brought me two years into this, and now I'm standing here and saying, "Well, we need more time to discuss this now." In the meantime, I have a, you know, I decided to plant my grapes. And I think a lot of you already know that I didn't just hire somebody to do that, I did it myself. I laid out every single vineyard row myself. My neighbor that, from the picture that Lisa took, when I first met them, there was an incident that we needed to, I needed to put a fence up. And I, within a few weeks, I had a seven-foot fence, I had three-foot high of small mesh wire, so that went down into the ground on both sides so animals couldn't dig in. Seven-foot fence, the whole 20 acres. I had an incident with, that I didn't do, but I allowed another winemaker to make wine in my winery for that crush season, the first crush season. And he dumped his barrel in the back and went into my other neighbor's yard, and a neighbor complained about it, I don't blame him. I had no idea that that happened. But I rerouted the drainage system at a pretty good expense to go into my own vineyard, into the valley part of my vineyard, so that I would never have that happen again. The sight and the sound things, I looked at that, and I tried my best to make sure that the trees were in the right place. And not only three or four or five or six, but like 40 of them, they're planted, they're there now. I didn't particularly want to pave, it really lost to me a lot of the rural character, but the county said I needed to pave, so I'm going to pave. I didn't really want to widen my road in the vineyard, but the county said I needed 20 feet road and it had to have six inches of gravel and so forth. If that's what I need to do, then that's what I need to do. I did a lot of studying in small wineries in Europe for a long, long time, and that's what really got me the desire to do this. I'm tired.
Mr. Lee, I understand your frustrations, and we have our frustrations on this end. Our dilemma is not with your winery or wine tasting room or what you're allowed to do there. It's the community center portion of it that we have our dilemma with. You know, you're not the first one to stand up there, you're not the, there was one ahead of you that was denied that could probably say a lot of the same things that you have. And as you can see, we've been put in a position to, for yourself, for anybody coming after you-
You know, I wanted to have food. I wanted to have food, and the only way I could, I believed this, for whatever reason, I believed that to serve food with wine, I was told this is what I needed to do. I guess that's, I don't know if that's true or not. Do I need to do this to have food service? That's what my belief was.
You don't need to have a minor use permit for the community center to have food with your tasting, but you would not be able to have anything other than just tasting, you wouldn't be able to have your wine pairing dinners.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what's happening, Lisa, is that what you need to have done isn't a long enough list. We haven't put on the things to define a community center on what you need to do. So we're making it up as you show up and talk to us and ask for something, and we're feeling behind the gun on it. We need to give you a list so that when you read it down, you don't have to worry about if I need to do something more, it should all be there in front of you, and we just don't know it all yet, to be honest with you. That's really the truth.
Yeah, you know, I kept asking, you know, if I have objections, just tell me what they are so I can abide by them.
Yes, sir.
If I, if you say, why don't we just say, "No weddings"? I'm okay. No weddings, period, period. Put a dot on it, no weddings. If that's what you want, just tell me that.
Yes, that's what we're trying to define right now.
But I was also told if this wasn't approved like really quick, it could be another year, two years before it is. And so what do I do in the meantime? You know, according to the wine ordinance right now, if I have, if I invite 20 people over and talk about vineyards and why wines in Italy are suited for the Italian food, and why do you not have, you know, over-oaked and creamy buttery chardonnays in France but you do here? It's because in France, they have, they serve butter and cream with their dinners. So you don't need a buttery creamy chardonnay. I mean, this is, that's true. That's what I talk about. That's what I love to do. And to have the food paired with these wines is, to me, is essentially important. It's not, I'm just trying to do a very simple thing. I don't need, I don't need rock and roll bands, I don't need concerts. I, it's already built, all right, it's already built, all the sound systems are already in there, and it's for small, light, soft music so that people can come and enjoy. The wonder of actually pairing great wines with food that really makes sense and understand why. I don't need rock and roll bands to do that. I don't need a lot of noise and sound. If I'm doing something that's too noisy or something, let me know about it so I don't do that.
I have a question for Lisa. How many more of these are in the pipeline that are going to be dropping into our lap here that we don't see coming yet?
The only one I know about is the, there was the three, the one that you denied, this one and the Rock Hill. That's all I know about.
Maybe we should just proceed with the public comment and see the extent of community concerns, and maybe we can get to a comfort level here to address this one individually and then send some strong requests back to the board for some more direction. If that works. Sounds like we're getting close.
I don't need the slides, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
Not at this point, maybe later. So anybody liking to come up, comment, please do so.
Lori Lewis, Wise Road. Here we are again, gentlemen, in another community center. We're talking about the planning mode of all this. I'm in the enforcement end with a winery, and you've heard it before. In '09, I filed a complaint with a winery, went to court, filed another complaint a month and a half ago about noise, about just trying to find out if she pulled a permit for an event that started at 6:30 in the morning, didn't get a response back from code enforcement. Finally got an email from code enforcement saying that a noise complaint isn't a priority for them. So we're talking about planning, and I'm on the end of an enforcement on a winery ordinance from 2009. I'm looking into the future thinking, I don't have much hope here, because we can't even get one winery into compliance with the existing ordinance. And now we're talking about community centers, and I happen to be on Wise Road, and I happen to be probably within a mile and a half of all these proposed community centers. And now I understand there's another winery going in by Baxter Grade on Wise Road, not proposing a community center now. So I would like you, if you could, to look into the future and how are we going to do enforcements? How are we going to, code enforcement doesn't have the personnel to go out to see if it's a winery event, or if it's a food pairing, or there's, the county has not set up an aggressive code enforcement to monitor this big balloon. And we haven't even got a hold of the winery ordinance. So please think further out than just the planning on the community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Dan Cross. I live in Lincoln, California, and have visited Wise Villa Winery several times over the last two years that they've been open. And I would like to submit- And I would like to submit, number one, that the owner of Wise Villa Winery has bent over backwards to accommodate the rules and regulations of the county. He told you here that he's worked with the county. He's gotten direction from your county staff, not someone else's county staff, your county staff over the last two years, as to what he had to do to accommodate the needs of the county, to be within the restrictions to make it happen. Got the approval of the ag commission, got the approval of the MAC. Now, I sit, I've sat for the last eleven years on the Planning Commission in Lincoln, and understand your role, and the responsibilities that you have. To me, number one, he could do right now, inside his tasting room, everything that he wants to do under this action, without even telling you about it. As do many of the wineries in this community. Saw Mr. Gray roll his eyes, and I'm telling you, I've been at wine and food pairings at more than one winery in this county that aren't permitted or aren't controlled, and the people just do what they want to do behind your backs. He's coming up in front of you, saying upfront, this is what I want to do. Don't call it a community center. Call it an agricultural event center, so it can be more clearly defined. But to me, after what this man has gone through over the last two years, the good corporate citizen that he's been over the last two years, contributing to our community, number one, I think it would be tragic to deny him this application today. And number two, I think to worry about what might possibly theoretically happen down the road isn't the way to manage a business. I don't manage mine. I don't see ten, or twenty, or thirty of these coming down the road. Mr. Denial, it costs too much money to do that. If it was that doable, you would see them here now. And besides that, who, the reason for, you have to have a reason for gathering. Just 'cause you build a center doesn't mean you're going to fill it with people. So, excuse me for being a little bit passionate here, but for him having followed the rules that have been set down by our county, for doing exactly what our county has asked him to do for the last two years in planning this center, and then to come here and for you to say, "Well, we're not prepared to act on it," I think you need to step up. And I would look at a denial of this proposal as telling the citizens of the state of California that we're not interested in economic development in Placer County, so you go somewhere else. And I would hope to think that in Placer County, we are interested in economic development. We are interested in the business, the ancillary business that this will bring to the community. When these people come in for a wine tasting or a wine class, they also visit our hotels and motels, they visit our restaurants, and, you know what? A hundred people attending an event out there is not a huge traffic event on Wise Road. I can hear somebody exhaling out there, but I'm telling you, it's not a huge traffic event. There have been events out on Wise Road. I've attended dinners with thirty or more people out there, with forty or more people out there, and it hasn't been a traffic event. So, my recommendation would be to pass this and to monitor it. You could almost use it as a test case for one of our good corporate citizens to move ahead and try and improve his business, and also improve the economic climate in our county. Thank you very much for your patience in listening to me.
Thank you. Can I get a show of hands of how many people would like to speak on this? Okay. I think in interest of time, Kathy, if we can start the clock, we'll give everybody three minutes. If you would like to just echo what somebody else has said, rather than repeat it, so you can get your opinion in, and then say something else to keep it moving, that would be good. And maybe if we can start queuing up a little bit, a few people behind the current speaker to keep things moving also, that would help. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Mike Giles, with Neighborhood Rescue Group. The last two speakers have both illustrated that there is a real problem with enforcement. I would echo that. There's a tremendous problem with enforcement. This board is doing the right thing. You're asking the right questions. Measure twice, cut once. If you cut too quick, you stand to make a tremendous mistake. So, I think you're looking at the public interest, which is where I think you should be looking. Mr. Grover's story is an emotional story. He's obviously a very intelligent man. He sounds like maybe he made some assumptions, or the county made some assumptions, that weren't accurate. But I want to tell you another story of a gentleman named Ron Tillery, who isn't here. He lives directly across from a winery. He's seventy-two years old, he's lived here for forty-five years. A winery directly across from him wants to be a community center. He does not want the community center. They've already had winery events, and the headlights come right down his driveway. The noise is gone at this particular event till eleven o'clock at night. Lisa is aware of this man. He's not here because he's homeward bound and he's oxygen-dependent. He's not alone. You've got lots of people in this community that have more heartbreaking stories than Mr. Grover's. His desire is to live out the last of his days in his home, in the community he grew up with, in the type of community he grew up with. Not next to an event center, a community center, which we clearly do not have parameters to define, and we don't have enforcement to control.
Let me see, is your example, this particular winery that we're talking about, the Wise Road Winery, the example you just gave?
This is not Wise Villa. Do you want the, if you wish, I'll give you this.
Oh, you don't give us names? I just wondered if you were talking about this winery?
No, I'm not talking about Mr. Grover's. What I'm telling you is this, you're looking at the big picture. You need to. There are a lot of people out there that are dependent on what your decisions are. Here are gonna be a number of heartbreaking stories, but you do have to take the thirty-thousand-foot level view, and I applaud you for doing exactly that.
Thank you.
Good morning. Happy holidays. My name is Robin Trimble, and I am the proud CEO of the Rockland Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today on behalf of the Rockland Area Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, who unanimously support this project. My Board of Directors would want me to tell you that Dr. Lee is an outstanding and pretty amazing businessman. He does a lot of business in Rockland, and he's got his Wise Villa Winery that we urge you to consider his proposal. I know it's been said that we have many of these that could come down the pike. You're all business folks, you understand financially, people cannot do what Dr. Lee is doing. There are very few people in this county who can probably pull off what he's attempting to do. I urge you not to penalize Dr. Lee for the county not having ordinances that fit what he needs to do. Unfortunately, somewhere along the line, he's been encouraged to complete a center that now you're saying not to do, and it sounds like it's happened before. So, on behalf of the chamber, I would like to say that we are in support of this project. The business community is in support of this project. We believe, from a business perspective, that this opportunity will increase tourism dollars, and have a good positive residual impact to other businesses and the community at large. And so, we urge you to support this project, although that doesn't sound too feasible at this point, but we would like to urge you to consider the economic impact in addition to some of the things we're doing, and urge the county, actually, to make sure we have ordinances to support a winery industry that's obviously very successful. So, I appreciate your time and your comments, and I do wish you happy holidays. And I would like to leave this letter of support for the record.
I'm Susan Ames, and I've spoken to you before. I'm at the corner of Wise and Gold Hill. First of all, I want to take issue with what Lisa said about there being no connection between community center and farm zoning. I said it last time, I'll say it again. It's right in the zoning, intent and purpose, the first few lines, before you get down to the permitted uses. Intent and purpose is to promote agriculture. So, everything that's permitted under farm zoning is to promote agriculture. If the other man wants passion, I can match him. I'm so frustrated with this. But the main point I wanted to make when I came here today, and you guys have already hit on it, is we need to take a step back, because we're looking at going from wine tasting rooms with a few dozen people to huge events with hundreds of people coming in and out at exactly the same time, lined up on the street. The mitigation report, I was stunned to find out that the report doesn't address the amount of traffic lined up in the way of other people that live in the area. It only addresses the impact on the pavement. That doesn't do anything to address the problem of people getting in and out of their driveways, getting in and out of their homes when these events are going on. I'm not against anybody making money, I'm not against progress. I know we need to do some alterations in our economic approaches, but a lot of what's being proposed is just not right for this area. It's right for somewhere else, but it's not going to work in this area. And I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, "We need to sit back." I'd like to see some community input to addressing these issues before they get out of hand. Because if we take that big leap from wine tasting room to two-hundred-person events, I think we're gonna have a disaster, and we're never gonna be able to get out of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Chaney. I live at Gold Hill and Schindler Road, the corner. And I want, again, by thanking the commission for the thoughtful analysis that they've given this. When I left, the last public hearing I attended, I was very dismayed in what, I felt maybe the public process maybe didn't have the voice I was hoping it would. And I was very disillusioned. And now, I hear a reflection of what so many of us that have been asking to hear, I'm hearing it back from you guys, and I'm so encouraged. I'm encouraged to be, to be able to be proud of the Placer County public process, because I'm hearing that you're reflecting these thoughtful concerns with good analysis about planning and land use, and about, I too, I'm for agribusiness and economic development in the appropriate areas, you know, of course, but, and I also, as it exists in the proposal, Mr. Lee's proposal, I, personally, I'm not speaking for a group, you know, I think he's hit the sweet spot between, you know, agribusiness and what's reasonable, and it's very heartfelt. I also feel that it's a mistake that with a minor use permit, under a community center, he can come back and change those restrictions with a minor use permit, because the community center one is so poorly defined, as you guys have identified. That's the scary part. This broadness is just too gray, it's too unresolved. You can say people in this community don't have the money to do what he has done, and I'm saying, "Well, a lot of these people aren't from this community." That's exactly what we're saying. It's not, these are folks who have lots of money, bless their hearts. I know his is hard-earned, and they're coming into our community with lots of money, and they're able to buy the land, to do the wells, to do the filters. It's gonna happen. And it's not bringing people, if you call it a community center, when you look at just the definition of community center, which I think we're all agreeing, that it's weak. It's not bringing community members together, it's bringing people outside the community, which is a good thing. It's a very good thing. It's just, where do we do that? And to what extent do we do that? I'm so pleased to hear from you guys that you're looking at the cumulative effects. One parking lot that allows for sixty-five or a hundred cars with the adequate lighting for safety of these people is one thing. You start to get twenty-five of these, and we have the Roseville Auto Mall. Basically, you're living across, people in agricultural rural areas that have livestock are living across from parking lots with lighting that is, is like, where do we get to see the stars again? And where, how, I know when to go to sleep? It's gonna be like an auto dealership. I mean, and I know it sounds like an exaggeration, but I just appreciate the fact that you guys are thinking of the cumulative effects, because my feeling was in the SEQA report on many of these, that they were identifying this in isolation, and not, thank you, not looking for it. If I can quickly finish up and say, it's such a shame that Dr. Lee is a victim of the fact there is no good definition. And this has been one of my things from the beginning. I hate to see someone get this far in the process, when they could have taken a look at something and know whether or not they're willing to comply.
Thank you.
And when, taking your time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm not glad to be here, but it's good to see you again. My name is Carol Rubin. I live near the corner of Gold Hill and Wise Roads in Newcastle. Dr. Lee's love of grapes and his devotion to his winery is obvious to anyone who has heard him speak. Nonetheless, eventually, Wise Villa Winery will pass from his hands. I'd like, I hope you guys will protect the agricultural use per the description of farm zoning in the county code of this property. And if you approve this MUP, please insert a clause into it stating that this community center use is void unless there is an existing commercial winery on the site. That's my only particular comment on this issue. More general issue has been alluded to by all of you. I've been very heartened with the discussion that you have had so far. It shows a lot of thought and concern. No rural Placer resident ever expects that living in the farm zoning means we will have to put up with a restaurant or a dance hall next door. And I was at the Orchard of Penrin hearing, and that was approved. The four supervisors who approved that did so based on the zoning. They said the zoning for that property had always been multi-unit development, and that the people objecting to it should have known that. Well, farm zoning doesn't mean restaurants and dance halls. We have to look at the integrity of the zoning. These types of facilities are excluded under their true names from farm zoning. You can't have a restaurant, you can't have a dance hall, but you can have a community center. Well, the only reason we're considering these for-profit event centers today is by a deliberate misapplication of a vague definition that was drafted forty years ago. This is not a foundation for good planning. A decision to permit these for-profit event centers as community centers not only sets a dangerous precedent, but it also undermines Placer zoning standards and erodes the confidence of Placer County citizens in the planning process. The Meadow Vista MAC and WAC MACs have registered their concerns about these sham community centers. You've alluded to that. Because I made these copies, I'll present the two, but I think you've already seen that line copy. They're requesting the Board of Supervisors take action to revise these definitions and standards. And I hope you will join with us in petitioning the board, you've already mentioned that, to do so as well. This is something that can only be settled by the Board of Supervisors, and the present process is frustrating, expensive, and time-consuming for all of us. It's got to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Marilyn Jasper, I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition and the Sierra Club. I am so appreciative of your grasp of this contentious issue. Thank you. We submitted comments under the SEQA, for the mitigated NIGDEC. We feel those comments, although staff may feel otherwise, that they are valid, that there is a lot more work that needs to be done, or even an EIR, because of the impacts. And SEQA was really clear about that. The problem, as we're talking about, we're trying to distinguish between nonprofit or government-owned community centers, as the public perceives them, versus commercial, private, commercial, for-profit, profit event centers. And I think you have talked about that. Inherent in that, in the farm and the ag zones, is this element in the general plan of compatibility and consistency with surrounding uses. The event centers that are in the hopper do not, are not compatible, and for many other reasons, including the impacts. I would hope that you would deny this project, and/or suspend a decision until the county creates definitions and parameters, guidelines, what we've been talking about. Also, possibly, if you're caught between a rock and a hard spot today, instead of two-hundred-and-thirty-two events, which is what he, what the applicant will be allowed, reduce that to possibly what's allowed in the winery ordinance. Six two-day events plus two temporary outdoor events. That would be... events. That would be, that would be one way to satisfy it. Reduce the numbers that are being asked for. And since this ag nexus, whatever that, I mean, I grow zucchini. Can I have a community center and serve zucchini at every event and get it passed? There may have to, what was alluded, somebody just suggested another potential stipulation, but another one might be that, like the Williamson Act, there are annual thresholds that must be met to keep that property in that contract. So maybe there can be a kickout. If you don't meet the threshold, whatever that would be, with the vineyard, not with the event center income, but with the vineyard itself, you get kicked out if you don't make that. Also, I would hope that you could have, or if you do vote for something, that you include a stipulation that failure to meet the conditions shall result in a revocation of the permit. Mike Carson's conditions of approval clearly say... Is that my three minutes? Shoot. Well, that didn't seem like three minutes. But also, just one last thing. There's a big distinction between what the county requires to get a winery, to have tasting. And let's not confuse what someone might have to go through to get those. Let's not put that on community centers. They're two separate animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Allison Spees. I'm a neighbor here, coming today for our neighbor of Wiseville Winery. My husband and I moved from Rockland about 13 years ago, bought seven acres, built our own home, have four children. We are totally in support of Wiseville Winery. I have two driving teenagers now, two more coming. We just love the vineyards, the family environment. We are completely in support, and I hope that you will agree and allow what Wiseville Winery is promoting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commission members. Larry Mintz, City of Rockland. I'm including my 12th year on the Planning Commission there, so I appreciate your exercise this morning, and thank you for your time. I want to let you know that in review of the mitigated negative deck, I think it has adequately addressed land use, noise, traffic, pollution. And a comment on SEQA, I think SEQA means reasoned development, not no development. What you have here is a positive influence to the community, both in culture and in agriculture. And I would urge you to vote to approve what's being requested today. It's been an interesting time listening to your discussion, but I don't think the decision on your discussion should bear on Dr. Lee. Maybe it's a thing that the planning, or that the Commission, that the supervisors can take at a time certain in the future. But I think to limit the development of Wiseville Winery at this point is a detriment both to Dr. Lee directly and to the community indirectly. So again, I would urge you to support the passage of this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eileen Wilkins, and I'm probably in this room the most affected by this permit process today, as I'm the closest neighbor to Dr. Lee and Wiseville Winery. I echo many of the comments in opposition to the approval of this process today. Dr. Lee is an excellent neighbor. I have no problem with his intentions to want to serve as a tasting room. But what we have here is a large commercial business. It is a large commercial business. Tasting rooms are one thing. A large commercial business is another thing. And I have been directly impacted. I take great exception to the environmental impact report. The stipulations in that report are wholly inadequate. Not once during that review process or analysis did anyone come to my property to assess the impacts. I have been impacted, and as Dr. Lee mentioned, there have been many measures taken to mitigate the discomfort to our quiet agricultural lifestyle. However, the business is still persisting. The business is still going on. And whether you approve this or not, he is still conducting business with large events. So the application that you have before you has no teeth in it. What if he doesn't comply? What will you do? He hasn't complied by having large events while we're still waiting for an approval. What have you done? I have been impacted in my home life by people exiting his large event center, coming out all at the same time, honking their horns, saying goodbye to each other, and all exiting at the same time. The traffic report indicates that folks will be going down Wise Road. That is not correct. They will be going down Garden Bar, as I've experienced. Those people leaving Wiseville Winery are exiting down Garden Bar, inebriated, impaired vision because there is not good lighting down Garden Bar, and they're all exiting down that way. That puts us at risk. And not only do I feel the impacts of people exiting his parking lot, 100-plus people, and by the way, there are no measures to guarantee that they're going to be exactly 100 people. And from the initial process that he applied for, these major events would be maybe one or two a month. Now they've increased, as well as the hours of operation have increased. So what is to say down the road that this doesn't morph into something much greater? I appreciate the fact that Dr. Lee has expended a great deal of money, but he got ahead of himself. He put this in, and then now we're trying to retrofit it. Well, that's not the way to do it. And my lifestyle has been severely impacted because of this major commercial operation going on with the parking lot 150 feet away from my front door. And there's nothing to say, there's no mitigating factors in here to hold him to any standards. And compliance has been brought up, and until we can address that, there is no assurances to the neighbors, particularly me, that that is not going to be adhered to. So I strongly encourage you to continue in your further definition of what we are really holding here, which is a major event center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Cindy Fake, and I'm the University of California Horticulture and Small Farms Advisor, and I serve Placer and Nevada Counties. And my job is to provide research-based information to farmers and other folks about agriculture and support farmers, ranchers, and grape growers in their agricultural endeavors so as to have an economically viable agriculture in Placer County. A lot of what we do is related to economics and business. I serve commercial agricultural producers. Make no mistake, agriculture is an economic and commercial activity. How many of you would go into business to not make a profit? That's the definition of commercial. People are expecting agriculture to not make a profit. People are thinking that just having land is agriculture. The reality of the scale of our agriculture in Placer County is you cannot grow grapes economically in this county, make a profit, run a viable business. You must have a winery. In order for a winery to be prosperous, you are going to need to have ancillary events. There is an intimate connection between drinking wine and eating good food. The idea of what's called a community center, I agree with whoever stated it should be called an agricultural event center, but we're bound by county wording for this particular activity center, whatever you want to call it. But the reality is, Mr. Lee has an economically viable agricultural operation. There is no question that this is a working vineyard. It is a farm. It is in the farm zone. The farm zone is the appropriate place for an agricultural business. Every farm, every ranch, every vineyard is an agricultural business. Yes, this is an extension of that, but this is a good thing for Placer County agriculture. Yes, Mr. Lee will gain benefits. The agricultural community at large will also gain benefits. He will be buying local products because people expect local wines to be paired with local produce, meats, et cetera. That is the way those types of events happen. So I strongly urge you to support this because it's good for economic development. It is good for the agricultural community, not just for Mr. Lee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Burke. I'm in Newcastle on Country Hill Run, and I would like to commend all of you for taking a step back on what a community center means. It's something that a large group of neighbors of both Wiseville Winery and Gold Hill Event Center, whatever it was called, have been very concerned about. So I appreciate greatly your thoughtfulness on this and would really, really appreciate seeing it at the supervisor level with something more broad. My concern is with monitoring and enforcement should this come to pass. Mr. Ricucci mentioned that his wife was at Wiseville Winery at a political event. A political event, it might have to do with manure, but I don't think it's an agricultural event. So my, excuse that.
You couldn't help yourself.
I couldn't. At any rate, I would really like to see some strong teeth in the monitoring and enforcement aspect of this. Thank you. Happy, happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, too.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Mike Carson. I hadn't planned on getting up and speaking today, but I've heard a lot of passionate conversation. A couple of things I'd like to comment on. First of all, the county already has several community centers within its designation, already approved, functioning. And I think that if you look historically at those businesses, they have not caused any of all these issues that these people are using as scare tactics. They function very well. They're very good neighbors in their communities. And I just don't, I don't see it being a problem if you allow staff to work with the parameters that they have to set appropriate conditions for the, you know, granted, the designation community center may not be appropriate, but it's what is in the zoning ordinance. Allow staff to do their job and look at each site individually and determine whether a minor use permit can address all of the physical constraints on the property to make sure that it will satisfy the needs of the use permit. You know, there's a lot of components that go into, not just financial, but there's physical components that go into whether a site is suitable for that use. And staff does a very good job at analyzing all of those through the SEQA document, the mitigated negative deck. You know, I've gone through this process. I know that. The other thing I'd like to say is that agritourism is an agricultural use. And granted, agriculture is a, does have commercial components tied into it, as you've heard from other people here. If it's done correctly and it's conditioned correctly, it benefits the whole overall community, and certainly the business community, will help with the economics. I do not have a problem if you approve this for what Mr. Lee is requesting. I think it's an appropriate use for his property. And so, you know, Ken, you mentioned that you don't know if you could look me in the eye. I don't have a problem with that. I think each project needs to be looked at individually, and does the physical, and does it meet the requirements through the county standards. I think that's very important. And then, look at them individually. I don't know. I struggle with this whole process as well. I've been through this for now going on two years. And I too want to say that, you know, I feel like I've done everything I'm supposed to and then don't get a decision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dean Farquhar. You're probably glad to see me. I'm the last one to speak. I'm one of these people that Mike is talking about. I object to these projects that they are being presented. I do respect the fact that they've gone through two years of working with this plan in the county. I've been at my address, located between these two locations, for 40 years, following the rules and doing what I'm supposed to do. I'm currently in agriculture. And I also want to commend you for, finally, I feel, hearing these people's voices about our concerns and the fact that we really need to look further into what these definitions are, what the future lies for us, and where we're going. You guys have a great holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Lisa Bacciarini. I live at 3057 Wise Road. From my front door, I can look out directly across and see Wiseville Winery. Beautiful facility. I drive on Wiseville daily, in and out. I've seen no impact with traffic. A couple of weeks ago, we had the Holiday in the Hills event, which was a lovely event with a number of the wineries participating. I had people from out of town come in for the event. They spent money locally. We went to the event. A lot of people at every winery saw very few cars. I think that what Dr. Lee is trying to do is going to help the property values in the area. We've seen it with our neighbors in Napa. It hasn't turned Napa into Times Square. It's a lovely, still sleepy city. I've worked over there. I've never come home saying, geez, I didn't get a good night's sleep because of all the partying. It's, I think, an enterprise that is helping all of our properties. And I think that he's done everything he can do to make a safe and property that is really going to bring some people into the area that is, and maybe help the other wineries do the same thing. So I think that as a whole, with everything he's done, and I've heard over here for the past two years, and I think he, to say that the community center is too broad of a statement, I think it's a broad statement just to say no to him without being able to give him at least the opportunity to see how it's going to work, even if it means a limited variance or however that it can be done, would be worth a try. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before anybody else comes up with the Commissioner's approval, could we take a five-minute break, please?
Sure.
Take five. Okay, if we're ready, we'll go ahead and pick up where we left off. Come on up. Oh, let's see, we probably need to wait for Kathy, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Stuart Perry. I wear a number of different hats. I own Fawn Ridge Winery, but I'm also a member of the Ag, Ag Commission, and the, the, the Commission kind of referred to our decision-making process a little earlier on here this morning. I just wanted to clarify, we struggled as well. Um, I think where the Ag Commission, uh, was coming from was the, the agricultural component of this particular project and, uh, the proposals therein being directly connected to, to the winery and, and the use of wine and the activity and so on. So, um, if that lends any more clarity, I, I do want to also point out that we, as a Commission, um, wanted to direct our Commissioner to submit a letter to the board as well, re- kind of requesting some kind of a, a different form of, uh, doing business that could be defined a little more clearly. But as it stands right now on the books and in regulation, I'm not sure Dr. Lee had any alternative than to continue to pursue what's now being called as a community center. So, ah, I guess from a personal perspective, I would hate to see us get too wrapped up in semantics and, and definition when it's pretty straightforward what is intent and doing business might be at this site. So, um, I certainly support the proposal insofar as it supports agriculture in our county. Um, agritourism is, is here to stay. It's, it's a nationwide, um, type of business that, that more and more farm, farmers are getting involved in. At, at the local level, I've had discussions with our local Mandarin growers, and they would like to have an opportunity to have, uh, dinner in the orchard. Um, perhaps some of the produce folks would also like to have a, a day on the farm without the necessity of, of, um, of needing to meet extreme regulatory measures. So, when, when you're talking about serving food and all the other elements here, I think that's what drove this project and, and kind of where Dr. Lee ended up going, if that be the case, so. I don't know if that lends any more clarity, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or almost afternoon, actually. Um, I'm Kevin Luther. I'm the manager at Wise Villa, and I just wanted to make a quick clarification on something, which is, uh, for any, uh, charity-type events that have been held under the current restrictions and so on, uh, we actually have a RSVP system that we can regulate how many people come to the winery, and we, with that, can ensure that we always remain within the limits. There was some concern of, you know, what if events get too high in the number and so on? Um, you know, if our facilities are designed for a certain number and we're limiting the RSVPs, we can regulate, uh, very exactly how many people are at the events and ensure that there's no violation on that level. Um, so just wanted to make that clarification and, uh, and say, you know, I know that myself and, uh, Dr. Grover Lee got in the wine street out of a love of, of, you know, good wine, agriculture, good community, and, uh, you know, just a, a good kind of world, and so we're always gonna, you know, do our best to address any concerns of, uh, the neighborhood under all circumstances and to do our best to be good neighbors and, uh, build a good community. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or morning. Um, my name is Charlene Fluger. I am a Lincoln resident. We moved to Lincoln in nineteen ninety, uh, from the Bay Area. I grew up on a farm in the Bay Area. I'm kind of a country girl with ag at heart, and I want to, I'm glad I attended today. I enjoyed hearing everyone's thoughts and concerns. Um, it's important that I think we listen to everybody and how they feel. I particularly want to point out Cindy Fake's, um, contribution, and then the gentleman after her and the following gentleman, the ag person, for pointing out the real root of Dr. Lee's, uh, business, and that is agriculture and his love for the wine and pairing with food. I think agriculture brings a tremendous, um, base to our community. That's why we moved up here. Um, I was a horse person, and I liked the rural country land and the farmlands, and I think all of these things are important. I've seen over the years the growth to our area, not only in Lincoln, but, um, the whole area. Highway sixty-five, for instance, uh, was a two-lane road when we moved here, and a lot of, um, businesses have come to the area. And I want to recommend that the, uh, permit go through. Um, I have attended a few of the events. I am a member. Uh, I live maybe less than a mile away, um, on Big Ben Road area, and we get quite a bit of traffic at different times, and it's never mass traffic. And when I've driven around in the area, coming or going to a couple of the events, it's usually been no problem. Uh, it's just a few cars here and there. They, not everybody goes at the same time, but, um, I see the issue possibly being semantics, and at this point, I, I would like to suggest that, um, maybe that be addressed down the road, but for today, I think it should be approved for the winery to go through everything. This process has been going on for two years, and semantics should not get in the way. Um, I think we've already, to any event we've gone to there, the RSVP, it's all procedural and it's emailed, and it's a really well-supervised, and any issues that can come up are always addressed very adequately and promptly, and, um, that's what I'd like to say for that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I might be the real last one this time. My name's Jan Decker, and, uh, I represent the Placer County Visitors Bureau, and I also run one of, uh, twenty California welcome centers in the state here. We're located here in Auburn, worked very closely with the wineries, and I have to tell you, you know, as I've listened to all these, um, dialogue here today, you have a lot to ponder. I, I understand that, and I'm not sure, I'd like to be in your seats right now, but I'm sure that, uh, you'll make the correct decision on this. I, I, I come from this with a little different perspective because, you know, we're the marketing arm. We want to see tourism be successful, and we need to see it come to this portion of the county, and I think that we strongly, uh, recommend that, you know, a vote on this to go move forward is critical. Um, you know, these type of event facilities, or whether you're calling it that, or whatever you call it, it is one more arrow in our quiver to bring this kind of economic business to the area here. It's critical. It gives these, whether it's a, I don't care whether it's a seminar, it's a corporate business, a wedding, there's going to be food some functions potentially with these. That's going to be using plaster-grown food items, we hope. Um, so I think it, if you look at the whole picture, it all, it all comes right back and it can, it can work. I mean, this can be very beneficial to the county, and I think it's something that we really, you really need to look closely at. Again, you have a lot to ponder, but at the same time, I think it's one of those things that it, uh, it gives people a reason to come to the area. Um, I know the, the situation with Mike, you know, he's got the, the bed and breakfast aspect of his along with the community center. Again, what, what better way to bring people to experience the rural community? If they can stay here, we know when they do that, they're going to stay longer, they're going to spend more money, and what's better than that? I mean, there's no cleaner industry than when people come, spend their money, and then leave. So, uh, I, I, I really think that this is a, a great project as others come down the road, and as I said earlier, we already have some that have opened. There have been no ill effects that I'm aware of. Um, I just think this is one of those things that we should look at and move forward on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close off public comment, and I guess would the applicant like to come back up and?
I would, um, I'd just like to say that I would like to, um, not have this delayed, you know? Make it or not make it, I'd like a decision. Um, I, I need a decision. I just need to know what's happening. I don't want to go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, are we back to discussion at this point?
You got it.
I'd like to make a comment procedurally at this point. We have two threads that are running through this discussion. One has to do with county policy, and the other has to do with the application of Dr. Lee. And I don't think it's fair to him to not take some action on his proposal up or down or whatever so that it can go on to the board if it's appealed and be finalized, and then we can have a discussion with respect to, uh, the policy and the issues that Ken, you were raising, you know, in the county, uh, generally. Um, and to that extent, I would point out that, you know, i- it bothers me that from an equitable sense that the man has been hanging fire for so long, and I do realize it takes a lot of time to get through the hoops, and I, I would like to do something, and one suggestion is, let's consider giving the conditional use permit for two years, for a period of time. It's going to take that amount of time to get all this flushed out through discussions and up to the board, and when he comes back in for renewal, if he has not followed the conditions, or there are objections, or noise complaints, or whatever, we can revisit those at the time, but I think that would at least give him the opportunity to proceed. If, uh, there's objection to it, it could be appealed to the Board of Supervisors, and it would then allow us time to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors with respect to the policy, uh, as a whole. So in order to start that process, I'm going to make a motion.
I'd like to say, ask questions of staff first.
Sure.
I'd like to ask staff, uh, under the existing winery ordinance, how many events are, are allowed per year, just if, under the winery ordinance?
They're allowed, uh, six events a year with approval of a ARP, Administrative Review Permit, as well as two temporary outdoor events, and that's, uh, through a TIE approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Paul? Yeah? But if they have a tasting room, they can, they can do that. I mean, if people come and go tasting.
Tasting is not, it would not-
Right. There's no restriction, so it's not something where it's just those events.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, Jerry, my, my one thought on this, even if we did it, did it for, for a two-year period, are we potentially setting up the policy maybe for the supervisors to, to follow? Because if we said, okay, here's a grant or denial of, of allowing this as an event center for two years, so, Stu decides to come in for, you know, his, his rant and says, okay, well, I can live under those, you know, s- same conditions, and I want the exact same thing. Are we saying, okay, we allow this one, and then if somebody jumps right into the hopper and says, I, I can do that, do we put, put it on hold after, after we make this vote? I mean, personally, I, you know, going through it and looking at it, I, I like this, I just have, uh, a problem because calling it a community event center and then what a community event center allows is a lot broader. I mean, I'd almost like to just change the name of this to something else and say, okay, here's the framework that would be allowed to do it, you know, in the agricultural zoning.
Let me, let me comment to the extent that I can on your, on your point. You've been on this commission a long time, and you've seen, as I have, people come in and say, well, I want this because you gave it to the person down the street. We hear that all the time. You know, they got it, I want it, and that's, to a, some extent, what I'm hearing here is the next winery will come in and want the same event center, community center, whatever you call it. And that's why I asked Lisa the question, how many of these do we have in the hopper? The alternative would be to continue this to some open date, not take any action whatsoever, and I don't think that's fair to the applicant. Whether it's pro or con, I, I simply don't think that it's fair to the applicant, but I think those who are following behind would be well-served to be advised by planning staff that, okay, we have to take in by law your application to put in an event center on your winery or your Mandarin orchard, or, as you pointed out, the Kiwi farm, but you should be aware that the Planning Commission is in effect having a unofficial hiatus on this until such time as the standards are set forth more objectively. And so- And so for that reason, I don't think we would see many of these about to follow, so I don't agree with you that we would have to do it for the next one. I don't think there would be a next one until we've had a chance to really thrash through the details of what we're going to do as a county. That's why I'm comfortable, in this case, you know, at least proposing consideration of the two-year standard.
There already is another one on, in the hopper.
Yeah, apparently, there's one somewhere behind us. At least we'll have to deal with that.
And what would be the, I mean, why wouldn't somebody argue that, oh, he's got it for two years, so get it in now while it's still up in the air, and you might be able to get the same thing, because they're ruling on it individually right now without a set county policy about it. So I would say that there's just as much argument for people jumping in right now if we do-
I think the only thing that would prevent that is the economics of making the investment to put in the required upgrades, and then only having it approved for two years.
Well, that's not supposed to read, well, if you've got 50,000, you can go for it, and 25, you don't. People come in without money.
Just saying, it's a substantial investment for a two-year approval that most people would probably not ask for and be willing to make.
Right, but we're not here to, you know, argue if they're substantial enough to make the argument or to put it in. We've got to have something that works for everybody, regardless of how much money.
No, but we're trying to use, we're trying to use a crystal ball and determine what's going to come in after.
Well, that's what planning is all about.
And I'm just, I'm just saying the likelihood of additional applications following a two-year approval.
I don't think likely is a good word to use, and if we're setting policy in a sense by, you know-
What, if we're projecting the future, what we're doing-
Wouldn't it work just as well if we denied it and gave him the right to go to the board and appeal it, and they make that decision on his individual case while we sit here and argue about what's going to really happen in the rest of the time with the community event center? It works about the same way.
That would probably be true, whether we approved it or not. One way or the other, it'll probably get appealed, and it'll be on their, on their table here before too long.
Possible.
But you make a good point. Yeah.
Well, you know-
I mean, that's one of the good points.
Yeah, that's true.
I'd encourage you to go ahead and make the motion that you're talking about myself.
The reason I was going to make the motion is, then we have something on the table, and we can bat it around and get down to specifics, you know, up or down, one way or the other. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I will make that motion. And the motion is that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration, approve the minor use permit for the Wiseville Winery Community Center, and approve the variance to the surfacing requirement, including the sequel findings in our staff report, all the conditions and other findings therein contained, with the proviso that this conditional use permit be approved for a period of two years from the date of approval.
I'd second that.
Now we can discuss it.
I guess just, in, in thinking this out, okay, at the end of two years comes up, and the permit that we have approved expires, does then it automatically renew unless there have been no complaints? Does it come back to the Planning Commission as a whole new application, subject to new conditions of approval and everything else? How, how does that work?
Yes. What we would propose is that we would modify the, the last condition regarding the, the exercising of that condition to read that it would be approved for a two-year period, and that it would expire on December 30th of 2014, unless a modification is approved by, is granted by the Planning Commission prior to the expiration date. So what they would do prior to the expiration date, they would come in with a modification of the permit to eliminate the condition that gives them only two years.
And as part of that process, would we then hear from the neighbors and be able to review what has actually occurred out there?
That's correct. It would be another public hearing with the opportunity for public input and additional conditions if deemed necessary.
Okay, so just to make it clear, my proposal would include his language.
What he's-
And I assume your second would be the same.
I think we should invite Dr. Lee back up to ask him, the question is, if he can afford to go ahead and do this project on a two-year basis with taking that gamble, I think that's going to be his decision financially.
Of course, if we denied it, he would have the right to appeal it to the board. He would also have the right to appeal this to the board to get rid of that two-year extension altogether.
Well, that's true, but the board might agree with us, and he'd still have the same, he's going to, I just, I guess what I'm looking for-
You're afraid the board will agree with us?
I, I think it would be worthwhile. I'd be curious to hear Dr. Lee say, yeah, he'd, he'd be willing to accept those conditions because I, well, I don't know if it makes any difference.
Well, you, the chairman can invite him back up.
Yeah. Who's the chairman? Yeah.
Dr. Lee?
I, I actually think it's a pretty good proposal. Either I do what I say I'm going to do or I'm not, and if I don't, then I lose it. So, why not?
Why not?
Pretty cut and dry?
Well, it's not that simple.
Let's call for the question.
You have more comments?
Well, I'm, I'm just pointing out that, for his application, it's not that simple. He could do everything right and still lose it if the board votes against him two years.
That's true.
I don't want him to, you know, absorb that loss, to be honest with you. That's what I, that's-
Business, business decision at that point.
A question, so that basically on the, on the motion, Jerry, would keep the standards that are already written into this proposal the same, as far as if that number is in, okay?
There's no change, only the two-year proviso.
And maybe if I could just clarify, it would be the, I think it was the last condition, we'd change that to read, this minor use permit is valid for two years and shall expire on December 30th, 2014, unless approval of a modification of this permit is granted by the Planning Commission prior to the expiration date.
Okay, so, just so I'm on the same page, Jerry, we're, we're thinking of, let's say, voting to approve or disapprove of this particular request, but that the next requests that come through are to be told that they may not be able to have the same standards apply to them?
Be on, be on an individual basis. Each, each one is right now currently on an individual basis.
So that the standard-
So they'd have to come in as an individual, and then we would consider it-
We still don't have the standards.
Still don't have the standard.
Still don't have. I'm just saying, we tell the next guy that we just don't have the standard.
Maybe, maybe if I can just chime in real quick on that, just to let the commission know, we have received a request to update the winery ordinance. We're going to be looking into the ordinance itself, looking at the number of events, so as it relates to wineries. And I've talked to the planning director about this, we'll also probably, at the same time, visit the whole community center issue. So I hazard a guess, we will be looking into this.
With, with that, Paul, and I know this sort of speculation on your part, when staff is, is looking into it, with the conditions that are set on this, from a winery standpoint, would, to your best guess, say that this would probably be something that would be written in to the, into the ordinance? Is it, you know, maybe upgrading the winery? If they have tasting rooms, and they meet parking standards and all that, that this would be something, I know it puts you on the spot, especially with everybody here.
Yeah, you know, we may, may have set it up to where it's, you know, the size of the, the property, and the, and then related to the number of events, or the numbers of people that can be associated with the event. Maybe if it's less than, you know, it's 10 acres, and there's less than 20 people, there's no limit. I know, it's just something that we definitely need to take a look at, to look at the, you know, the size of the property, and see if we can come up with those standards, you know, relating to, well, what happens if it's less than 20 people? And, and maybe these standards should apply.
And, and they're all good questions, because for, for me, just with what you said, it potentially makes a big difference of, of how I would vote on this, you know, looking out into the future. Because I, to being a businessperson, I understand Dr. Lee's concern. I mean, you know, he just wants to know, can I move forward beyond the tasting room, you know, with this event center? And I would want to know, can I do it or not do it, you know?
And Ken, if I might add that, all the numbers in the parking, and the traffic, and the noise begs the basic question, what's agricultural? All of that is a side issue to whether these people are putting on an event that's related to agriculture. And we need to have some body or some means to define what that is. And we still don't have that. And all the rest of it is fluff until we get that settled, it might be.
Which was the second thread of the discussion.
Thread two?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we still don't have any ideas.
We're not there yet.
Should we get the first thread voted on?
We have a, a motion and a second, and I think we've discussed it to death.
Huh?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
There are appellate rights associated with that. You might want to-
Correct.
-read those at this point before we continue.
Once again, anybody wishing to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission may do so by paying a fee of $529 within 10 calendar days of today and do so.
Now we come down to the issue of what to do about the lack of a standard here, and the unfortunate use of the word "community center" rather than wedding center, event center, seance center, whatever you want to call it. Where, where do we go with this, Ken?
I, I, I don't know. I think since it's agricultural, the, the problem is, is the community event center and agricultural zoning. I mean, honestly, when I, when I read this and stuff, it just, I, I tend to agree with Cindy and, and a lot of the people said, from a commercial standpoint, because with the way it's proposed, I'd say, yes, it meets the standard. Where I really had the heartburn, and the reason I could say, yeah, I could vote for this, you know, standalone is, is got some assurances that we are looking at it. Now, I would like it look beyond just the wineries, too, because there are other agricultural events. I mean, there's a lot of different agricultural uses out there, if you look at the different maps, for different things that go on. And how can you accommodate all of them, but not make it so, you know, you do have 300 people out dancing somewhere till 1:00 in the morning or whatever, but where it is tied to the agricultural, you know?
Ken, do you think this rises to the level that the county might want to consider a zoning text on this particular subject, as was requested by two of the Max?
I, I would think so. I think I've mentioned that before, is, I, and I don't have a specific idea whether it's somebody going in and saying, you know, I, I guess I sort of look at it as where it really dropped off was maybe in community plan updates in different areas and stuff. You know how a lot of times you go in and say, okay, you have a certain zoning, and you'd like to upgrade or downgrade your zoning? Where there was something in there that was specific to an event center, because I'm, I'm thinking under this, that event centers are completely out of the ag zoning, and maybe there's a different name that comes up, that it's an agricultural event center, you know, something like that.
Well, maybe we, as a commission-
Event center.
Would like to recommend to Paul and to the planning staff, since they are apparently going to start down this road to some degree, that they took, take a look or consider the possibility of adding language to the, to the zoning text to define an, an event center, or whatever the word should be, the degree at which it should be associated with agriculture, how we measure this, how we enforce it. And then have public hearings, and, you know, this will take a couple of years to do.
And then acreage sizes, too.
All of that.
Because that's very important to me.
All of that, yeah.
And I, I guess another provision that I think would be important to me is that we, in terms of defining agriculture, that we don't make this so specific, so that we're favoring one sector of agriculture over another sector of agriculture.
No, but I think we, as a county, our vested interest is in promoting business.
Right.
And trying to support them to the extent we can, you know, balancing the interests of neighbors and so forth with that. So I think that this is ripe for a, for an investigation and hearings and a full consideration by the planning staff.
I think, too, for Paul's sake, I think if you go to the point of determining that this, that this is a basis, the basis is it's a wine tasting center. So once you've made that finding, then you start adding other items to it, and there has to be certain findings you make in order to add those other things. As you move along, you've got to have certain acreages, you've got to have water, you have to have different findings. So you have a list of findings you have to make in order to qualify for some of these other additions. And I think that, that would help Paul in creating the litany of things that can happen at different locations. And some of it could be traffic, or, you know, just a host of things that have to be, it's almost like an environmental document, but it's, it's, it's need to have, meet all these findings in order to get all the things you want to do, or-
But it incorporates into the county code-
Yeah.
...language that's much more objective than what we have today.
Yeah.
So by the time that it gets to us, it will have jumped through all of these hoops, and we will know the standards by which we have to judge it.
And then I guess the other question is, do we ask the board to stop taking, I mean, like to put a moratorium on these type of applications prior to-
I think, I think that merely advising the people who may come in with one of these, that, you know, it may be a while before this gets considered, maybe sufficient, or the economics may jump in and, and trump us all.
Can you go with the clean? I, I, I understand the position, and I can see everything up to a point where we still need to decide, regardless of how many rule or, or areas that have to be met by somebody, is that when all those are met, and they have the parking and the noise and the room and everything, is this event, two wedding, a wedding between two farm families, is that an agricultural event? Is that agro-tourism?
That's part of the definition of what is agro-related.
Yeah, that's, I don't think-
And then it becomes enforcement. Okay, so you have the relationship.
Right, but it's not, but who, who does that interpretation, I guess is my question.
Do you volunteer?
I see people over here that they get paid for it.
Well, I-
They have weddings, divorce is both.
I didn't, I, I mean, it's, you can set up all the scenarios for having an event
or community center, but the event that's being held is what's in question.
Right.
And I'm just curious, is, does anybody here have any idea how to figure out the answer to that?
Well, I-
I have the problem, give it to them.
Well, these people like to know.
Well, I, I think it's, it's, does revolve around the agricultural, whatever they're doing.
Yeah, I agree.
And I didn't, I didn't say anything, but when, oh, I can't think of the gentleman's name, but-
Mr. President?
No, on the Tourism Board, you know, to bring people in and promote it and stuff. He, he made a, a comment of, well, you know, I'm, I'm for bringing in groups, like if it's a business group that, that comes in and they're, they're doing a meeting or something, I think that doesn't qualify as an agricultural event.
If they're drinking wine while they're doing it.
But, well, no, that's, that-
But every one of these scenarios is a good question. How do you enforce it?
Yeah.
And that was brought up early on, the, the-
There, there's a difference between, you know, a bunch of business guys going out to the winery to have some wine, and there is, as if they're coming in specifically to-
Discuss.
To, yeah, discuss business, or-
Yeah, and I don't know that we'll ever solve a question like that.
I, I don't know. I mean, it, we heard where some of them are having events out there all the time or more, and things that aren't supposed to be maybe going on per current regulation, but it doesn't seem to be bothering anybody, but I-
Those would be things I would assume staff would look into as part of this process. And I assume there would be hearings, and the public would get to weigh in, and-
Absolutely, absolutely.
And at the end of it, instead of having a horse, we'll have a camel, right?
Okay.
You don't need a motion from us, do you, Paul?
No, I think we've heard a lot of great comments and direction, and we'll take this back to the planning director and, and-
I think we understand-
We'll start working on something.
Right.
We got one last item on the agenda?
You want to just call it?
Do I have a motion? It was suggested by someone that we continue it till next meeting, is that-
We can.
We did that last time. No, I'm here to stay. I'm going to spend the night at your house. I don't think anybody likes us anymore.
Hi, I'm Kathy Donovan from Planning Services Division. We're returning the single-room occupancy. We're returning the single-room occupancy item, um, for your consideration for a zoning text amendment, and, uh, recommend to the board the adoption of a negative declaration for the zoning text amendment. Um, as was discussed with you, I believe at the September twenty-seventh meeting, um, state housing laws requiring that at least one zoning district, um, provide for SRO units as a clearance item. Um, we are updating the housing element from the two thousand nine version that we had. In that two thousand nine version, we stated that we would be working on a zoning text amendment to implement the single-room occupancy unit as condition G four or program G four. Um, the proposed definition is SRO residential housing means any building containing five or more guest rooms or units intended or designed to be used, or which are used, rented, or hired out to be occupied, or which are occupied for sleeping purposes by residents, which is also the primary residence of those residents. Basically, what it is, is a, a small apartment or similar to a hotel room, um, some, uh, hotels are converted into SRO units in other jurisdictions. Um, they may have a restroom in the unit or some type of cooking facility. The size of the units is limited. Um, at your twenty-seventh, uh, September twenty-seventh meeting, you asked the item to be returned to, uh, better-defined rooming and boarding houses, to look at the zoning districts we're recommending for a clearance for SRO units, and what are the provisions for bathroom and kitchen facilities? Uh, we're proposing, um, the definition for a rooming house, um, in the slide, uh, any building or dwelling or portion thereof with access provided through a common entrance for the renting, uh, or individual bedrooms to five or more people with a property owner or other manager that resides in the residence. Boarding of four or fewer renters is not considered to be a land use different from single-family dwelling. We have revised where we would recommend the zoning to be a clearance item for thirty or fewer units, uh, it would be clearance in highway services and resorts, uh, and the other districts who would require either a minor use permit or a conditional use permit. This, uh, varies from the previous recommendation of allowing as a clearance in a residential multifamily. The provisions for bathroom and kitchen facilities, there wasn't anything specific we could find for kitchen facilities, and the building code sets up the standards for bathroom facilities and is based on the number of people, type of occupancy. Some sample floor plans of what an SRO unit may look like. And, um, we do request that the zoning text amendment, uh, be approved, uh, recommendations to the board and adoption of negative declaration go to the board for approval.
Are there, are there parking standards for this?
Uh, yes, there are parking standards for this. What's the parking standards? Chris Schmidt.
Like resident, I mean, the, what standard residential requirements would be on-
Parking standards?
Parking space where we rent, probably, that you're renting out.
So the parking, Chris Schmidt with planning, the parking is, it's kind of loose, and we're saying it's provided based on a demonstrated need. However, the parking standard shall not require more parking for, than for other residential or commercial uses in the same zone, so it's basically a multifamily standard. Um, it can't be more than a multifamily, family standard, but I think we're going to be flexible that if, if they're showing that these people do not own cars, that we would allow fewer parking spaces. Um, intent is this is affordable housing, so we're not going to overburden them with a stand, like parking requirement that they may not need. Um, there is a requirement that you have to have at least one space for each unit and one space for an onsite manager we're required, and one space for each additional employee. So there, there are some standards, but there's some flexibility in there.
Probably won't work at Lake Tahoe.
Kathy, I realize that this is, this, this arose because of a requirement or direction from the state that, that we do this, right?
Correct.
Did the state provide the definition of SRO, or is this something we came up with on our own?
Uh, the state proposed a general definition, but we went more specific to how we thought that it might work in our county.
What was the state definition, do you happen to recall?
I'm sorry.
I understand you talk about a building containing five or more units, because four or less is single-family by definition of our own code.
And that is the state code as well. One to four is, uh, a single family-
Right.
And five or more is multifamily.
Used, rented out, hired, and so forth for sleeping. So I guess, uh, a brothel would be okay.
Where?
Right next to that marijuana shop.
Yeah.
Right next to the winery.
Yeah, right next to the winery. We're getting punchy. I was just curious what the definition differences were and how we limited it, if, if you know, if you don't recall what the state definition is, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, fair enough. And so essentially, you've taken this and put it over into highway residential or highway service, right?
Highway service and resort.
Yeah, which is what we discussed last time.
Correct.
Which is about where we want these things, I suppose.
Well, last time we were, uh, struggling with, what's the difference between a boarding room and a-
Boarding house.
Rooming house, yeah, in a single room. And I, I read the definition here, and I guess I'm still missing what the distinction, because you walked up to a place that's got a front door and you walk in and it's got five rooms, is that an SRO too?
Didn't the boarding house feed you?
It's, it's possible.
What?
The, um, the difference is, you're going to have kind of a hybrid situation where it's hard to distinguish, is it a boarding house, is it an SRO? An SRO, though, is typically designed for more independent type of residency. You usually have your own entry door, there's not someone living inside the same structure you're in, like in a boarding house where there's typically a, a owner of the property or a manager of the property and they're renting out rooms. Where an SRO most often has its own independent door, and, uh, entry into, excuse me, entry into the SRO unit requires, uh, that you provide a, a notice that you're going to enter, where the arrangement in a boarding house may be that the owner could enter into your room. Um, it would depend on how the leases are structured, but it really is designed just to be like an apartment, but smaller to make it more affordable.
What, what we, what the code says is that a boarding house is, uh, bedrooms are rented to five or more people, there's the five again, and at least one common meal is offered per day. Our concern was, or at least my concern was at the time, that I didn't want somebody who is essentially putting up a flop house, a tenement, an SRO, a boarding house, whatever you want to call it, a barracks, uh, was going to go over into the residential multifamily area, whereas we really wanted them limited out to the commercial thing. So we're, we were dancing on the head of pins here, trying to figure out a definition of what one was and what the other was. And we're still at that point, the difference between an SRO and a boarding house, uh, okay, I've got a can of SpaghettiOs and I give that to my tenants every day, so now I'm a boarding house.
SpaghettiOs.
Yeah, I, it's, it's somewhat meaningless, but we do have the direction from the state, and, you know, being good soldiers, we will comply.
I have a question for you concerning the entrances to the units. You said that typically on a, a SRO, the, um, entrances from the outside, is that right?
Most often, yes, but not always.
Is it required?
A lot of times it's because SROs are conversions from some other building type. Um, if you're building new, uh, from the beginning, you will typically design them like an apartment, where if you're converting from a, an old motel or hotel or, um, a type of, of building where maybe you have commercial on the bottom and rental units above, like you see a lot of times in Sacramento, they'll have a common hallway, and then you enter into the doors to the, the units which had been hotel rooms, all enclosed. Um, it really, there are so many different types of SROs. I used to work for the state, I monitored for the state, and I've been up and down the state and seen many different types of SRO units, but most of them, um, are just the smaller designed, uh, individual units that someone lives in. Um, many are in a larger building where they can have activities, uh, in a common area, where I haven't been to many boarding houses in my working experience or personal experience, but the, um, SROs is, I've seen many, many types of structures that contain-
Most of them would have a bathroom, right? Most of them would have a bathroom?
Most that I have seen have a bathroom within it, and a lot of times will have a hot plate microwave, and then to that extent.
For a boarding house, you would expect a common bathroom?
Yes.
Apartments, when they have so many units, are required to have onsite management after that fact? Is there a similar requirement for, for this?
Yes, there is. It has the same, uh, requirement as the apartments.
Okay.
Suppose, Kathy, I want to build one of these in the residential multifamily zoned district. And whatever you envision an SRO as, this is it. But in order to justify it in the RM designation, I decide to give people breakfast, you know, like you get sometimes at the motels, a cracker and a glass of water. How do we limit that kind of, uh, game playing to prevent SROs from essentially invading the RM district?
Well, they would have to go through the minor use permit, um, requirement to go on the residential multifamily, they would have to show us what their management plan would be, um, how they plan to run the facility. Building new in a residential multifamily district, uh, the price of the land might be a limitation, but we really have to review what their management plan was to determine whether or not it would fit into residential multifamily zoning.
To see whether they really were going to provide meals.
Is the only difference.
Okay.
Their management plan would have to, would have to identify meals, activities, those types of things.
Yeah, 'cause the definition is at least one common meal. Well, you could, you could paint that so broadly.
That's it, there's no other thing saying you have to have this many activities or your, or outside entrance or anything, it's just the meal thing is basically what it's.
Yeah.
I could envision this being part of employee housing for a, a business. It, it had to have a lot of kids working there, and they could live upstairs and the business could be downstairs, is that-
It is possible. Um, the San Diego Heights development at Norstar is workforce housing and is set up in a dormitory style, which would most likely qualify as an SRO if we were looking at it now.
You're saying workforce housing? Definition is another one?
Okay.
Yeah, it's-
Commercial downstairs?
We could certainly look at it some more if there's some other restrictions.
Is there, is there any way for us to tell the difference walking in, the difference between an SRO and a boarding house other than the meal? Is there any other single concrete, not, you know, a typical or a maybe or, I mean, is there something that, uh, an inspector could actually look and see physically, a difference between the two?
I do not believe that there is anything concrete that you would be able to see walking in because of the conversions that are done for this purpose.
Okay, I, that's, I thought that, but-
Yeah, I, I agree with you, it's, it's very similar.
You'll know when it bites you.
Going back to the law of unintended consequences, I'm wondering, what are we missing here? You know, because the developers and builders are going to act in their own best interest, and I would too. You have to try to put theirs in the best light possible so they get the best return.
Well, when the state came to the counties to say that, that we needed a new definition, what was their reason?
The idea is not to exclude this type of housing, um, in all districts, that each jurisdiction will make it an available type of housing, um, with just a clearance, to expand affordable housing throughout the state. And it, it does tie to transitional housing in the overall, the state bill that, um, this was contained in. It's just to provide lots of different types of housing that could be built, um, with a clearance, to provide housing for all people in a jurisdiction.
Every now and then we see that as a planning commission, we've seen it on, on churches. There was a federal law that was passed that said we couldn't consider them any different than any other application. And we saw it on, we used to call it granny flats in this county, where you had to have actually somebody living in there who was related, and then the state intervened and said, no, no, it's now a secondary dwelling unit, and here are the standards that apply. So obviously, there was some issues somewhere in the state where somebody had one of these and it was denied, and they got mad and got legislation passed, so now, you know, we have to take a flea bath.
But basically, it's to promote affordable housing.
Yes, it is.
Probably.
Right. Uh, in the high-cost areas, a lot of these, you'll see in the news, there's been a lot, uh, in the Bay Area where they're a hundred and fifty square feet, um, some of the designs are very creative, not unlike a cruise ship cabin room with all of the built-ins, and it's amazing what they can do with a small amount of space. So they're getting the maximum amount of units for, that they can get on one parcel that happens to be a very expensive parcel of land.
Is this going to be in conflict with homeowners associations generally, or is it going to supersede them, I suppose, huh? It's only going in, uh, resort and, um, highway commercial service zones, so there shouldn't be HOAs.
But that's, that's one of the choices, is what-
Multifamily residential, you've got that in a lot of areas.
It can go in there with a, a use permit.
With a use permit, yeah.
Yeah, so it may create a conflict there.
I don't know, I, I'll look, I'm worried about it later, I guess we have to comply with the state law no matter what, and so-
Yeah, that's kind of what I, and they, and the staff doesn't like it either, but they've done as good a job as could be expected. And Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then I recommend and move that we forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for adoption of a negative declaration and approval of the amendments to the Placer County zoning ordinance as set forth in attachment one to our staff report.
Before we do a motion, do we need to go through the formality of asking public comment here?
Who's here?
Or, or at least make note that there are no members of the public here to comment?
I, I think that statement is, does detract.
I could go out and speak as a member of the public, but I won't today.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, completing my motion, subject to the SECA findings and zoning text amendment findings and so forth, and our staff report and the conditions attached, and the proposed language is stat, attached there too. And this is a recommendation to the board, it's not a final action.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I think-
Dangerous.
Holy gee, Christmas.